Go ahead and get started. This is the Planning Commission for the City of Royal Oak. Before we get started, let's introduce ourselves, starting to my left.
Dan Godak.
Charlene Douglas, Mayor Pro Tem, Anne Vara.
Doug Hedges, City Planner.
Ann Beaky.
Eric Klooster.
Mark, this is Chief Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you. Okay, next item is the approval of minutes for January 8th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Godak. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Beaky. Is there discussion? Not seeing all those favors. Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Moving on. Item C is Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. If there's anybody here that would like to speak with the Planning Commission on a non-agenda item, please raise your hand. Okay, not seeing. We'll close the public comment on non-agenda items, and we're going to move on to new business. This is a public hearing. It's for a rezoning from mixed-use two to a planned unit development and a preliminary site plan, SP 190203, to construct a four-story, multiple-family building with forty-eight upper-level dwelling units and underground and ground-level off-street parking on the site of the former jewelry store, Chin Jewelry, at 1003 South Washington Avenue. Mr. Hedges.
Yes, before you tonight is an application for a preliminary planned unit development. The application involves the rezoning of the property from its current mixed-use-two zoning district to planned unit development, or PUD. The petitioner is seeking to construct a four-story, multiple-family building with forty-eight upper-level dwelling units and both underground and ground-level off-street parking. As with a PUD, the commission can approve any use that is allowed under the zoning ordinance, and the proposed use of multiple-family dwelling units is, in fact, allowed under the site's current mixed-use-two zoning, though not at the density that the petitioner is proposing. As with any PUD application, the commission can also modify or waive various required zoning ordinance standards, of which the petitioner is seeking a list of several waivers or deviations, most significant of which would be for the minimum lot area that is required and also for the off-street parking. In the current, the site's current mixed-use-two zoning district, multiple-family dwellings must also meet the minimum lot area requirement that is applied in the multiple-family residential zoning district. Under that formula, i.e., multiple-family dwellings must have a minimum of nine thousand square feet of lot area for the first two units, plus three thousand square feet for each additional unit. The site, according to the petitioner's site plan and survey, has only fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-one square feet of lot area, which would allow only three dwelling units. Under mixed-use-two zoning, the commission could also authorize a density bonus of up to one hundred percent under certain conditions, which could allow up to maximum of six units on that property. Again, the petitioner is proposing forty-eight units. That would require either a parcel with one hundred and forty-seven thousand square feet of lot area, or a lot with half that amount, plus the maximum allowable density bonus. So that is probably the most significant waiver they are seeking. The other waiver would be relating to off-street parking. Under the zoning ordinance, all dwelling units are required to have two off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit. The petitioner is proposing a ratio of one point three spaces per unit. And they are providing sixty-three off-street parking spaces on different levels, both on the ground level, and also they are proposing some underground levels as well. That also provides another concern, who's brought to us from the Engineering Division, regarding required stormwater detention for the property. The Engineering Division is concerned that with the underground parking levels that are proposed, the petitioner may have difficulty meeting the underground stormwater detention system that would be required. Petitioners indicated to us they feel they would be able to comply with that, but that is an ongoing concern of the Engineering Division. They're also concerned, Engineering Division, about any impacts construction of the underground levels may have on the adjacent property to the south, and that, you know, the walls and foundation of that building would have to be protected so they are not damaged or impacted by construction of the underground parking levels for the petitioner's proposal. Again, this is a preliminary planned unit development application. The commission in the past has reviewed some preliminary applications. As a final application, if they don't feel they need to review it a second time, so the commission does have the option to review this as a preliminary planned unit development plan. If that is approved, the petitioner would then have six months to reapply for a final plan review by this commission. And then, at that point, the commission would make a recommendation on the project to the City Commission. If you don't feel it's necessary to see this a second time, you could also approve it as a final PUD plan and send a recommendation to the City Commission this evening. In our report, again, we've listed the other waivers that the petitioner is seeking, such as related to the height, the width of the two-side facades, the setbacks of the building and the corner vision setbacks. They do have some balconies projecting over sidewalks, which would either require a waiver, but staff recommends that they be removed. There also seem two landscaping and screening standards, which would also be required to be waived. I know the petitioner and their architect are here in the audience tonight, could probably answer specific questions regarding the proposed project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on our staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. Any questions for, yes, Ms. Douglas?
Yes, Mr. Hedges, talk to me a little bit about the balconies projecting into the right-of-way. Both this building and the other one we're looking at tonight have that similar feature, and I find it attractive, but, so what alternatives would they have if they wanted to retain that look, that feature, and not have to worry about a license from the city? And maybe part two of that question is, what does that license entail?
Well, as proposed, the upper levers of the building are placed right at the parcel boundaries. And they have balconies projecting forward into the right-of-way, which is not something that can be approved under a site plan approval or even a PUD approval by the Planning Commission. What would be required to have them overhang into the right-of-way would be a separate license agreement from the City Commission, separate from any development agreement for the PUD. The petitioner's options to avoid that would either be to remove them or to have them recessed into the building, to where the balconies are recessed into the interior of the building and do not encroach or overhang into the right-of-way.
Or could they reduce the size of the building so that it had a ground-level setback equal to, say, the amount the balconies project?
That's another option, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Godak.
In your item D, building setbacks, you call out that there's two setbacks that are not on their drawing, and you scaled them. Do you have those values, what you scaled?
If I did, I would have labeled them into the report. Let me see if I can find that quickly.
You can give me that later, I guess. I'll ask it after the petitioner talks about it. It's something I'll ask.
Yeah, I think in under the subparaphract D on pages three and continuing on four, I list what the actual setbacks are. On the ground level, a west front yard setback of one foot eight inches from Washington Avenue. On the north side yard setback from Hudson Avenue, it'd be six feet to the windows of the common area and three feet to the rest of the facade. Then there is an east rear yard setback of three feet eight inches from the public alley. On the upper levels, there are no west front, north side, or south side setbacks. The east rear yard setback from the alley of one foot would be provided for the upper levels. So those are the ones, the numbers that weren't provided, those are the ones that we scaled to. I believe those were mostly on the north front. I think the other, I know the ones from the alley and from the front on Washington Avenue, those numbers are specified on the plan sheets.
Great, thank you so much. Any other questions for Mr. Hedges? Ms. Beaky.
Related to the setbacks, so if the setback were maintained at more than a couple inches, either several feet or the ten feet that's normally required, that would resolve the balcony issue, as you noted. How much would that also help with the water retention issue, if there were green spaces left around that could be planted with?
It would.
Planted, et cetera, would that help offset the concern about the underwater?
It would help. As to how much, I couldn't say. I'd have to defer that question to the Engineering Division. It wouldn't negate the requirement to provide underwater stormwater detention, but it may reduce the calculated runoff by a certain amount. How much that would be, I don't know.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hedges?
Good evening. My name is Gabe Rubin from Berkeley Realty Group. I am representing the petitioner and owner of the property, Duke &amp; Duke Investments, along with Brian Howard, owner of HF Architecture in Royal Oak. So we're very excited about this development. I think it is a great, wonderful-looking building that will certainly add to the value of the newly revitalized Washington Avenue corridor. Really, this development was designed around two playbooks. One, being the target market residential housing study that the City of Royal Oak had completed a little over a year ago. And two, the development almost directly across the street that I was involved in on the former Button site. So, you know, as I mentioned, the development was designed around these two, and along with the parking ratio, and similar in architecture as well. As I stated earlier, we are very excited about this development, and it will only do wonderful things to the Washington Avenue corridor. And I will turn it over to Brian Howard to answer any specific questions that you guys may have on the building.
Hi, good evening. I want to pass out a letter which specifically talks about the stormwater and the foundation underpinning, which I'll also then comment on. I'm sorry this didn't go out ahead of time, we just got it. With regards to the stormwater detention and the, what the letter states is that if, and I use that word "if," there is an issue with groundwater here, that we have a solution to do a surface or just below grade detention system that will then pump water from the lower levels to keep it from exiting onto other properties, exiting into the Royal Oak infrastructure system. So there is, these are all preliminary drawings. We have not went to the extent of full engineering drawings to figure out every little aspect of this building. I'll be honest with you on that. But what we have done is we've done our research in terms of how to handle what the Engineering Department was stating in the report. With regards to the underpinning of the building to the south of us, or what is stated in the report is undermining, when we got our preliminary report for this building from Doug, there was one item in there that he stated, well, a couple items, but one in particular was the location of where we originally had the trash enclosure. We actually flipped that concept, went with his recommendation on moving the trash enclosure to the south part of the alley, so the southeast corner of the alley. We had it on the northeast corner of the alley. By doing that, we were able to flip the stairwell from the parking level up to grade and then keep everything on grade against the building to the south on Washington. We don't have any issues with regards to structural foundation work that will compromise or will become a negative to the building to the south of us. So we've looked at specifically the design of that particular wall and not creating a problem. We really, we don't obviously want any issues or problems. There was a couple other comments within the report that I'd like to comment on, which had to do with building height. If you notice in the rendering, the stair tower to the direct south of us is actually set at forty-six feet. Our building is at forty-three feet. The red, the top of the red boxes are at forty-three feet, three feet below what the height is. And I know the height in this particular area or for this particular building is thirty feet. But as you can see, we've tried to utilize the height of our neighbor. We've tried to, and I'll go to the setbacks for a second. We've also tried to keep a street in line. If all of a sudden I start setting a building back ten feet off of a property line, yeah, that's fantastic, nothing lines up. This isn't, this is an urban setting. And so, in our opinion, the balconies that project out create a variety to the facade versus flat facades that have a bunch of punched openings in it. I do agree that if we, we have two options, I think. One is eliminate the balconies. But I think the better approach would be is to push each facade back a foot, still give us our balcony projections that we want, but not have to project over the property line. So I still would like to keep the notion of what we've designed. We're willing to modify the building to meet what the ordinance tells us we should meet, as well as we certainly don't want to go into a licensing agreement with regards to balconies sticking over. We'll modify the structure to match what we're going to do and keep everything. That'll also help with the landscaping, because what that'll do is that will then push that first floor back. Now, I'm certainly not going to meet ten feet on my first floor, but I will say that we'll get five feet, six feet. We'll get more landscaping, which will help to soften the building at the street. So those are just some of the items that I wanted to discuss. The other one has to do with parking. And as Gabe stated, this building directly across from us that Gabe was part of had the parking study that was done that was talking about a seventy-seven unit building at one point three spaces, not the two-point, two-point-zero spaces. This particular building at forty-eight units has a breakdown of fifteen studio units at five hundred square feet. It has twenty-four one-bedroom units ranging between six-twenty-five and seven-forty square feet, and it has nine two-bedroom units ranging between nine-seventy and a thousand forty square feet. If you do the math on that and you sort of say to yourself, okay, I could see how a two-bedroom needs two cars. I get that. I also look at it and say a studio needs one car. And if I use the one point three for one-bedroom units, if I do the math on that, it's a total of sixty-five spaces for this building. We have sixty-three. So that, in my opinion, is just something that I think is tangible. Now, do I have a report that states that? No, certainly I don't. But I think to say that I need two car spots for a five-hundred-square-foot studio unit, then we, then none of these projects will get built in this town. I mean, those parking requirements are ridiculous, in my opinion. So I just wanted to state that's some of the math I did on this particular project. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Casada.
I know you just handed me this, but to get the sixty-three, you go how many levels down?
Two and a half.
Two and a half levels down. If you have to use the tanks, are you going to lose parking?
No. There's an area, Doug, could you pull up that first-floor plan, please? So, Gary, there's a sliver, well, that one works too. There's a sliver, if you notice the parking ramp that goes down on the south end of the building. There is a quadrant area before you get to, it's nine foot of width, between our retaining wall of our parking and the building to the south. That is also about sixty feet long. So what our opinion on solving this detention or retention issue is to utilize that space, you know, one story down, for instance, with pumps. So we're pumping the water from the lowest level. If we have a groundwater issue, we don't know if we do. If we do, we can utilize that and also underneath the ramp at the point of which it starts to slow down. There's also areas, Doug, if you could flip back to the couple parking levels down. We have areas. Like, I'll reference the area right directly north of the stairwell on the Hudson-Washington site. We have some rooms that also allow us to put pumps, if they're needed, in those particular areas to get the water and let it leak into the system. So we think we have a very viable solution if it's an issue.
Follow-up question. Have you any experience with this system or knowledge about other projects that use this system?
No. What I reference is the letter that I know I just gave you. Which talks about a system that is exactly what I'm talking about. So we would be hiring the professionals to handle this particular concept. In our opinion, we think we have a viable solution using this particular engineer or another engineer to come up with a creative way of solving if we have a problem.
Mr. Casada? Okay, just sticking sort of with that floor plan, that main level, I'm looking at the floor plan, I think I understand what you're saying, is that there's a space between the foundation of ten-seventeen South Washington and where you have to start excavating below grade.
Correct.
And that look, I can't measure, what is that, six, how far are we talking?
So it's nine feet of depth.
Okay.
And I want to say, Doug, if you could flip back to that first-floor plan, please?
You're going to need to, if you're, sir, if you're going to speak, you have to wear a microphone.
It's about fifty feet long.
Okay, and it looks like ten feet wide to me.
It's nine feet plus the width of the wall. So what you're seeing is the width of the foundation wall, which is twelve inches wide.
Okay. And this building to the south is not that old. Have you contacted the designers or the constructors for that building and get?
We have not yet. Again, we're at the preliminary stages. We will do that, absolutely. And what my hope is, because they're renovating that building, my hope is that we could get some documentation on what that foundation is doing. That's my goal.
Thank you.
Ms. Beaky.
I might have missed this in the paperwork or in your opening statement, is this intended to be a rental unit or a condominium? It's rental, correct?
Rental.
Rental. And then, with regard to the rental, one of the issues with parking sometimes helps is to decouple the parking rent, rent for the parking space from the actual unit, so you are less constricted. If a person doesn't have a car at all, then you free up a space that someone else can use it. Do you have any plan on how you advantage the parking versus the units?
That, I am not, I do not know the answer to that. What I do know is, as I stated earlier, the, this development was really based off of the information that was provided to the City of Royal Oak in the target market housing analysis, specifically stating, you know, that millennials and new residents that are moving to the City of Royal Oak, they're just, they don't have two cars. And more people are taking Ubers and Lifts and walking or riding their bike or carpooling. So we, that the parking is going to be an issue at all.
So just related to that, to whoever's going to be doing the renting of units such as this, throughout Royal Oak or anywhere else, if the parking's decoupled, that helps mitigate the problem with the number, to keep that in mind.
Mr. Casada.
Just another quick question. The materials that we're looking at, the red materials there, are those enamel metal panels? What are those things?
They are, they are going to be a metal panel, which will be a, the product we're looking at right now is called Longboard, and they're going to run vertical, and they have a clip system, and they have corners, and they have all the little details and all that stuff. So we're very confident with this particular product. We've seen it on numerous buildings going up around town. This just happens to be a red color versus some of the other colors that you're seeing.
Okay, obviously, I think they, I think they look good. I don't know if the, some of the panels, over time, everything wears.
Sure.
And sometimes a bright color, the colors fade.
Sure.
I don't know what the specs are in this particular product. Do you?
I don't, off the top of my head, no.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Klooster and then Mr. Godak.
So those are, they're not an insulated metal panel? It's, is it concealed fastener metal panel?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, can, again, can you clarify the intent that you're exploring for the stormwater detention?
Sure. So the, the letter that I gave you specifically talks about doing a system, again, and I keep reiterating this point, if groundwater is an issue. If it is an issue, we feel that we have, you know, I'll use this as an example. So almost every project in Royal Oak, over ten thousand square feet, has stormwater detention underneath a parking lot or lawn or something like that. Everyone. This concept is the same, except what we're doing is, it may be here where our parking level is here. Water comes down into a parking deck that's going to go where the traffic's going. It's going to get down to the bottom, it's going to go into a system, a cistern, it's going to go to a pump, the pump's going to pump it up to our pipes that we have underneath the main level. And then it's going to trickle into the system, no different than any parking lot in Royal Oak does. So I don't know if that answers your question?
Yeah, so you said the storage would be underneath the underground parking, the stormwater storage, or this?
No, no. You have catch basins down there at the lowest level. Those catch basins will then get piped to a pump. That pump will then pump them up to the top and store them in drain pipes that are about this big around, and then that will leak into the infrastructure system.
So those would be above-grade storage pipes?
Nope. They're directly below grade. They're two feet below grade. I don't know if you've seen any of these parking lots around town. You see these big black pipes sitting out here behind City Hall, right over here? That's what gets put underground, that's picking up all the surface water. Our surface water, if it's down here, will get pumped and then pumped up, directly up to our pipes, which are up, call it fifteen feet above it.
Yeah, so your stormwater detention is more for storing the water that would typically go into the ground, but now it's not because you have a building there?
It's no different than a parking lot. It's no different than a parking lot. Because in a parking lot, it's not grass, it's not gravel, right? It's pavement. We just happen to have a building that sits over our parking lot.
Yes, it's impervious surface that doesn't allow water to percolate into the ground.
Correct.
So instead, it goes into the stormwater infrastructure, and if you have a highly impervious area, that infrastructure can't handle the large quantities of stormwater that are entering. So detention is meant to store that water and slowly release it. What I'm asking is where is that water being stored? Because if you have underground parking underneath your entire site, you're not going to be able to put it at the ground floor, underneath the ground floor.
Hey, Doug, could you flip back to that A-100, please? Or A-101, I'm sorry? Right here, right through here, is no building, and this is on grade level, this slot right through here. So the idea is to run pipes, five feet down, three feet down, I don't know exactly yet, but run pipes here. When the water comes down the ramp, it'll end up down in this quadrant somewhere. It'll then get pumped over to a pump system here or here, we don't know exactly where just yet. But then it'll get to these pipes, which then will lead directly into Washington Storm. So the way the parking lots work, obviously, and you know this, is that in a catch basin, it's going down and it's hitting a pipe, and the pipe's holding, holding all the water. And then it gets a constrictor that then allows the water to trickle into the infrastructure system. So the concept that we're talking about isn't any different than that. The only difference is, we're down twenty more feet that we need to get that water up. Now, this will also hold our roof sump water or our roof water that will come down and also find its way into the same storage tanks.
Yeah, I mean, that's gonna be the bulk of your stormwater.
Correct. You're absolutely correct, yep.
Okay, and that's kinda why I wanted to have, I'm concerned about the space that you'll have there with your earth retention system that you're gonna need and getting pipe in that cavity.
Sure.
I would look at blue roof solutions. If you don't, if you're with just a couple inches, you can store a lot of water on a roof system, so I think that might.
You're right, that's absolutely another.
That might be a potential for this one.
Yep, I get it.
The, have you explored the drive, the entry drive coming in off of Hudson instead of coming off of South Washington?
Yes, I did.
The ramp won't work?
Nope. It's not deep enough to make the turn, and we also looked at it from the alley, and the alley's not wide enough to then come straight down and make a turn. So yes, we did look at that. But our feeling was, to be honest with you, is that Washington felt like it should be a street that cars ingress and egress out of. One, because it's an urban collector's street and not a local street, and my concern, our concern was that if you're dumping cars onto a local street, that's more detrimental than if I'm dumping it onto an urban collector, which is what Washington is. So that was kind of a move we made pretty early in the game. And being that the entrance to the, what is it, the ten seventeen building just to the south of it, us is also right on dumps onto Washington, so kind of a decision we made that we thought was the right move. And then when we got into the width of the property, making the turn, it just, we couldn't collect, there's no way you could make that turn.
Mr. Godet?
I'm looking on the deviation list that the planning department came up with item L. I'll probably ask multiple questions about this later on, but for now, just the first one, your minimum corner vision clearance setbacks.
Yes.
Concerned that you don't have a ten-foot triangular setback on the corner, especially cars coming out onto Washington for pedestrians and vehicle safety to be able to see around that corner. Have you calculated what your triangular setbacks are on your plan?
I have not.
Okay.
And I guess I'm trying to fully understand, it says provided at the northeast and northwest corners, correct?
Well, you're not prepared to provide them anyway, so I'll skip that answer for now. Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
I have a question for you. What is it going to take, what would it take for you to get an understanding of if the stormwater system, not this one, but the one that we typically use would work, what effort do you have to put forth to explore that?
I guess, I guess I, to do, to store it on the roof or to store it?
No, our engineer is concerned whether or not the stormwater management system would work, the traditional one that we've been using in the city, he's concerned that it will not work. You provided us with a letter, which I haven't read.
Right.
What I'm asking you is, what would it take on your part to move forward to find out if our traditional system would work? Like what do you need to do? What kind of engineering on your part do you need to do? Because you haven't done it yet, so, and I understand that, you wanna get to this point first. But what would it take to get there? For us to be comfortable with, and have our engineering department be comfortable with this plan?
Well, I would think that, one, we'd have to have soil borings done to see where the water table actually is, which is not difficult to do, nor is it very costly to do. Where you get into some substantial cost is to basically come up with a full engineering plan that would show whether your traditional system works or doesn't work. Now, I'm not sure how, if the water table ends up being the biggest issue, then we have to either do one of two things. We store it underneath the lowest part, and then we pump it up out to the system. We gotta get it up somehow, based on where we are in terms of our level, sort of twenty feet below ground that we are. So if we did a system underneath the lowest level, we still are gonna require some sort of a pump system, or, you know, for the rainwater, we can certainly hold it on the roof, do it that way. So there's a couple, there's a couple scenarios, I think, that play themselves out here. One is the fact that we have the water table to potentially contend with, and we have a building that basically fits the entire site. So we have, we have a lot of rainwater we have to collect. And the collection of it in the system I'm talking about would come down within the building, get into the pipes, and then leak itself into the, into the infrastructure. It's kind of, in my opinion, I guess, no different than the way they do, are doing any buildings here in town. The only reason I was talking about the pump system is to pick up whatever groundwater we have to absorb or gather that would then get pumped up into the piping system. So it's probably, I can't put a price tag on it, you know, what it would cost for somebody to go through the steps?
I'm not asking the cost, I'm asking what you need to do. Well, let's push the pause button. Doug, can you, are you prepared to comment on what it is that our engineer was troubled by this particular plan? Is it his knowledge of the soils in this area being suspect to proper drainage?
Yeah, their comments to us were the potential location of the water table in this area compared to the underground parking levels that they were proposing.
Okay.
That it might be difficult to install the stormwater detention system underground that complies with their requirements with those two factors.
Okay.
They just wanted it known ahead of time because that might impact the design of the petitioner's building and the number of units they're proposing that, but, you know, if the petitioner feels they have a system that will work, then that's something the engineering division would have to review, you know, should the project eventually receive all necessary approvals and they go through permitting.
Okay. I mean, I just happen to think the stormwater issue's a big deal. I mean, it's a huge deal. And I, you know, I was just hoping to have a little bit better of an answer. I appreciate what you went through to get this letter from this structural engineer, but I just think, I mean, stormwater's a huge issue in southeast Michigan, let alone an urban environment like Royal Oak. And we've all experienced that, so I think the planning commission's encumbered to making good, smart decisions when it comes to the whole package, not just what your product is, but the stormwater component as well. So that's why I'm asking the questions.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm certainly not gonna speak for my client about whether he wants to travel down that road, but what I will say is that we certainly could probably, we, I'm sure he wouldn't be opposed, and correct me if I'm wrong, but he wouldn't be opposed to taking the next steps with a civil engineer to investigate an option or a couple options, so it would appease the engineering department, at least at this stage of the game, and the planning commission. I don't think he would be opposed to that, to help to get through that or get past that, that item.
Mr. Casada?
Just thinking about this, so I like the balconies, but I am concerned about them over the right-of-way. And if I heard correctly, the suggestion was taken positively, that maybe you pull the facade of the building back so it doesn't overhang, which would also give you more landscape area. And it seems to me that would also give you a better vision around the corners because you're pulling it back some.
Correct.
So that'll be at least minimized, if you go through that exercise.
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Can I comment on Mr. Godet's question?
Please.
Although we don't have the specific answer in regards to the corner vision clearance, one thing that could be done, and I've seen this on other projects in Royal Oak, is putting in systems that notify when cars are approaching, whether it's a blinking light or a flag or something that comes out. That could help with the vision clearance or any issues that you may see in regards to pulling out on Washington and potentially causing accidents. There are, there are systems, and I think Billings, that development, I remember there was a notification system that was put along the side of the building.
Thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, not seeing any, why don't you go ahead and have a seat. I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this project? Yes, sir, in the back. I just need your name, and this is for all the public speakers. You have three minutes.
Rick Kurowski. My biggest concern here is the concern with the stormwater runoff, particularly as we get more and more density, in particular apartments and condos or any other living-type buildings downtown. You're gonna have to bear in mind that we definitely need to have a very stringent and very complete stormwater plan, because if we don't, south Royal Oak residents over around Campbell and Stevenson become the retaining pond for a heavy downpour. I mean, where I'm coming from here is, if you had a building that was retail before, now you have sixty, or how many, I don't know how many units you had here, I've forgotten. Now you have people inside using the facilities who are going to put, we have a combined system, unfortunately. So we have to handle not only additional storm, we have to just handle the stormwater, but you have to handle additional sewer water that you weren't getting before with the less dense project. So I would like to make sure that we have a very, very detailed plan on any stormwater retention systems for stuff going in downtown that have a higher-density environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, on the aisle. Could you give your name, please?
Good evening. My name is John Midgen, four four eight two three Marigold Sterling Heights. We are a property owner up the street off of Cal Toppa Main Street. We're actually here for that reason. But I just wanna commend the developer. I don't know the area, I don't know the impact of it, but I will say I respect the fact that they respect the property heights of the adjacent properties. They respect the setbacks of the adjacent properties, and they're not looking to benefit from the surrounding infrastructure or parking, they're providing all their own parking. So I don't know anything else about the parking, but I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Brad Dorr, four one six East Kennelworth, speaking for my wife and I.
I'm sorry, your last name, sir, is Dorr?
Dorr, D O R R.
Okay.
Yeah, I own a few properties on Kennelworth and some other stuff in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
We're in full support of the project. I walk by here all the time with my dog, and we're in full support of it. We would like to see this kind of progression or progress in the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone, we'll close the public hearing. We're gonna open it back up to the commission. Any questions for the petitioner, Mr. Hedges, or discussion or motion? Mr. Godet?
I'm just gonna give some general comments. I do consider the the triangle for vision on Hudson coming out onto Washington a big deal. And the systems that are available that were used on other sites, that was like for a driveway coming out onto an alley. There's no good application of an electronic system on a public right-of-way street to a collector like Washington that's gonna be used. If I was to support this in a preliminary fashion at all, it would have to, like some of the other commissioners said, adjust your setbacks so the balconies would be your, your leading edge for the building. So you'd get a little bit of help with that, and maybe even corner off a section of the building. I don't have a question here, I've got some comments right now, so if I do have something I need you to respond to, I'll ask. The density, I think, is pushing the limits. The, there are thirteen deviations from, that are listed out in section E of the planning department's letter. That even if you get a PUD, these are standards for buildings that a PUD should follow. The scale on the Washington side is the width to height. If you look at it from the Hudson side, it's not as bad because it's a longer structure with the height. But the size of this lot is point three four acres, and that's that's only twice the size of my lot in Royal Oak that I have my fifty by hundred and twenty-foot bungalow on. So I realize we're developing areas, but I think we're pushing limits with density on these lots, and that's a concern to me. I'll leave that as comments for now. I'll probably have some other questions later.
Mr. Casada?
Okay, well, I'm very familiar with this because my office is two doors south, and so it's unfortunate that Chin moved away, but I like the project, I like the balconies, I like the look of it, I like the concept. I think it's, it is difficult to, you are, of course, it's very dense. What we have is the petitioner saying, yeah, I'll pull the building back. And so I think that we probably, my inclination would be to look at this as a preliminary approval because we'd like to see how that plays out, pulling the building back. I think that will help the corner visions. There is a problem coming out on the Hudson, I can tell you. You come out of that alley and a lot of cars come down there fast. There's an arboretum sitting in the easement that makes it hard to see looking to the east, so, yeah, we don't want any more of that. But I think if the building pulls back a little bit, that I think they may be able to address that a little better. Exiting onto Washington, that's the right spot for it. I agree with the petitioner's comments there. I wouldn't wanna see it on Hudson. The alley, like I said, the alley is already a difficult exit there. We don't want more traffic there, I think we want less. So I hadn't, to tell you the truth, I hadn't heard of a blue roof before. I'm not sure that putting, holding the water on the roof isn't gonna create extra cost in structure, and I don't know how that plans out, but that's for them to figure out. So it is a challenge. plans out, but that's for them to figure out. So it is a challenge, the stormwater is a challenge, but if they can't meet the stormwater requirements, they're, we're not gonna approve them. So I think that I'm gonna be looking to support this project with these contingencies as a preliminary approval, that's where I'm going with this.
Thank you, Mr. Gesana. Any other comments or any questions for the petitioner, or is there Mr. Klooster?
Yeah, I, I agree, I think I'll also provide my preliminary support for the project, I think that the density makes sense in the location where it is. Washington is, is turning into a, a more urban corridor with street fronts and, and higher-density housing options available, and so I, I think it, it makes sense in this location. I, I do struggle with the entrance off of Washington being thirty feet from the adjacent parking entrance, and the adjacency of those curb cuts are, are difficult urbanistically, but also understand that it's unlikely that, that would work anywhere else, and I'd much rather see parking within a structure than surface parking. So I, I, I think it's the, the efforts to stitch this in, in a smart urban way have, have been made. I think for final PUD, you should have a really strong conceptual understanding, at least, of how you're going to manage the stormwater for this site. Underneath the underground parking is going to be really, really difficult with the groundwater, and the infrastructure in the street is not two and a half parking levels below grade, so the pumping system's gonna be a problem. So just make sure that you have something that makes sense, that engineering agrees with, and isn't overburdening the infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Klooster.
I'll just add a quick comment. Again, overall, I'd like to echo, I, I think it's a good start and a good looking building for that corner. Again, I'd be inclined to give my preliminary approval, and again, with the stormwater issue, encourage the owner to look at any green options, whether it's the roof, the setbacks, the plantings, to offset and mitigate that as much as possible. And so that's where I am right now.
Ms. Douglas.
I'll take a swing at a motion here. I'm going to move that we grant preliminary approval to the PUD with the understanding, granting them the concessions that we see in Point L of the document, except that I would ask them to reduce their footprint so the balconies do not extend over the right-of-way, that they provide further information about stormwater in this next step. I think that's it. Any other terms people want included here before I finish talking? So Commissioner Godick has talked about the corner vision, I'm not sure if reducing the footprint will resolve that. Do you, if you would like my motion to include a better vision clearance at that corner, I can make it so.
Not necessary.
Okay, then that's my motion.
So your motion is for a preliminary approval of the PUD with a reduction of the footprint in order to pull the balconies back out of the right-of-way, and a better stormwater management plan with, that gives us an understanding of how this is gonna be handled.
Yes.
Those two things, okay, so is there support on that?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Is there any discussion on this?
So if, if I may.
Please.
I like this project, I find it very attractive, it's, as Mr. Klooster said, this is an area where we are seeing more residential multifamily development, and the Washington corridor is a good place for it. But if you'll indulge me for just a minute, we have a lot of people here who haven't been to a planning commission meeting before, so maybe if I may give a little bit of, kind of put this in perspective.
Please.
Private property owners have the right to build on their properties, and it isn't really the role of the planning commission to tell them that they can or can't, but to listen to their plans and make sure that their plans for what they propose accommodates the people around them, accommodates our systems, our infrastructure, our parking, and so forth, and is, is a benefit to our community. So over the past two years, this planning commission has seen eighteen multifamily projects, either, some of those were reapprovals or reviews of those projects. And this planning commission has put many developers through the wringer to make them adjust their standards to something that we, as the decision-making body, found acceptable. We approved all of those projects. So, I mean, the fact that we approved this project or any other project means that the developer has satisfied our desires, our wishes. Our multifamily zoning is very outdated in Royal Oak, you heard Mr. Hedges say that our current zoning requires that you have nine thousand square feet for the first two, two units, and something more after that. That's not what contemporary multifamily is like. Contemporary family, multifamily is smaller units, it's designed to serve often the young people that Mr. Howard talked about, and older people who are looking to live in a smaller environment. But contemporary, and, and over the past two years, when we look at the eighteen projects that we've approved, we have consistently approved buildings with narrower setbacks than our zoning requires, and, and we do this because it's a special approval, it's not true that we planned unit development in this case. So we've approved buildings with narrower setbacks, we have allowed buildings to have one-point-five parking units per, places per unit instead of two, because they're smaller units, as Mr. Howard correctly pointed out, we have allowed greater height than our zoning ordinance specifies. And in doing this, we have followed a study, which we conducted and paid for here a couple of years ago, a target market analysis, that said that Royal Oak would be experiencing continuing high demand for multifamily housing in units of this size and, and smaller, even, you know, two- or three-unit buildings as well, but these are the apartments that were being proposed. So we sort of need to be consistent here, we have, we have deviated somewhat from our zoning standards with other buildings, and so I think we kind of need to be consistent with this one as well. Madam Chair, with your permission, at the end of our meeting tonight, I'd like to have a brief discussion about our current housing, our multifamily housing standards, and see if we can get a report back from the staff at our next meeting to see where we are with potential revisions to that.
Good idea.
But that's why I'm, made this motion, and we'll be supporting it.
Mr. Gesana.
I'll be supporting the motion, but I got, I got a procedural question here. You, Commissioner Douglas mentioned Section L, which lists the deviations, but I think that there's a number of requirements that, under the recommendations, that really mirror everything that was said, with the exception of B five.
Oops, I missed something?
So, yeah, I guess, I guess I'd like you to look at this, I think what Commissioner Douglas is proposing in her motion is that we're gonna adopt the recommendations of, under B, C, and D, E, F, G, and H, with the exception of B five, which is, we're not gonna make them get rid of the balconies, we're gonna make them pull, pull back the balconies.
My understanding.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
Any other discussion? So I like the project too, I, I, I'll be supporting the motion, I have a very big concern about stormwater, so I, I would expect that you'll be addressing that through this process.
We will, for sure.
And get us a proper answer. I think Mr. Klooster's brought some new good ideas, he's an architect, so he deals with this a lot, but I think it's a good plan, it's a good start. Any other comments? Okay, let's call for the motion, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we've got one, two, three, four, five to one.
Very much, thank you.
They have six months, Doug, to come back, they have six months to come back?
They have six months, yes, to apply for final PUD, excuse me, final PUD review by the planning commission.
Right. All righty. Okay, item two hundred, new business, is also a public hearing, and this is rezoning from neighborhood business to plan unit development and a preliminary site plan to demolish a former automobile filling station and construct a five-story mixed-use building with ground-level office space and sixty upper-level multi, multiple-family dwelling units at one zero zero five North Main Street. Mr. Hedges?
Yeah, again, this is another preliminary PUD application before you. The petitioner is requesting two things. One, they are requesting that the property be rezoned from its current zoning of neighborhood business, and have that changed to plan unit development or PUD zoning. Second, they are looking for approval of a site plan to construct a five-story mixed-use building that would have office space on the ground level and sixty upper-level dwelling units. Again, any land use allowed under the zoning ordinance can be approved as part of a PUD, and both uses of multiple-family dwellings and office space are allowed within the current neighborhood business zoning, so they would be permitted as a PUD, within a PUD. As with the previous application, there are a number of waivers to required zoning ordinance standards that the petitioner is seeking, the two most significant of which are the height of the building and the number of off-street parking spaces. Within the current neighborhood business zoning district, the maximum building height of thirty feet is allowed, the petitioner is requesting a height of fifty-two feet, which would be to the roof line of the top or fifth level. So they are seeking a waiver of twenty-two feet from the maximum permitted building height of thirty feet. The second significant waiver would be the number of off-street parking spaces that are required. As mentioned in our last case, each dwelling unit requires two spaces, two off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit, with sixty dwelling units, that would require a minimum of one hundred and twenty parking spaces. The office space on the ground level would require one space for two hundred and twenty-five square feet of usable floor area. Based on the petitioner's floor plan, we've estimated that that could require up to forty-two parking spaces, so a total of the required number of spaces required for the project would be a hundred and sixty-two off-street parking spaces. To provide parking, the petitioner is proposing two scenarios. The first, they have ten off-street parking spaces that they are showing on their site plan that would be toward the rear of the building and accessed from the adjacent public alley, so they would provide ten on-site. They are also proposing to use an adjacent public parking lot to the west of the alley. The use of that lot is not something the planning commission can approve as part of a PUD. Use of that lot would require approval of a lease agreement from the city commission, separate from a development agreement for the PUD. So in order to utilize that lot for, you know, their tenants, they would have to seek approval of that from the city commission as a separate agreement. We have provided some information regarding that lot within our staff report, stating, you know, that, that municipal lot has one hundred and three off-street parking spaces. That lot has also been referenced in multiple variance applications from adjoining properties. Of all the properties adjacent to this development that front on either Crooks, Main, or Catalpa, all but one of those developments has had to seek a parking variance from the zoning board of appeals in the past, all of which were granted based on spaces being available within that municipal parking lot. If we added up all of the variances that have been granted for those properties in the past, there's a total of fifty-one spaces that have been, they haven't been reserved or counted directly toward those cases, but if they had been, that's the number of spaces within the lot that would equal the number of spaces that have been granted previous variances, which leaves fifty-two spaces within the lot that are essentially unencumbered and could be considered for a waiver or variance for another use or building, and that is what the petitioner is seeking, is to, again, utilize the spaces within that public lot to meet their parking demand. Again, it would not equal the number of the waiver that they would be required under the zoning ordinance. By only providing ten off-street parking spaces, they were looking at needing a waiver of a hundred and fifty-two spaces. And again, there are essentially fifty-two spaces in the lot that have not yet been counted toward a variance toward another property. Those, again, are the two most significant waivers. In our discussion with the petitioner, we have recommended to them, based on the amount of those waivers that are needed, that they consider, you know, scaling back the project to either a lower height or fewer units, to get the num, the, the number of parking spaces that would be required for this development closer to the number that could potentially be available within the public parking lot. Again, use of the parking lot would require a separate approval from the city commission, and that is something the petitioner would have to seek separately from the planning unit development for the site plan and the rezoning of the property. There are a few other waivers that they're looking for. Again, there are certain parts of the building which fall within the minimum required corner vision clearance setbacks, the east front and west rear facades exceed the maximum permitted height-to-width ratio, they are below the minimum required amount of lot landscaping required, they're also, the driveway width along the alley exceeds the maximum width permitted, and there would also be a waiver necessary for the minimum maneuvering aisle width along the side of the public alley. There is a potential other waiver that's needed for the number of replacement trees required. That, we note in our report, could potentially be met, depending on the number of street trees that are planted along Main and Catalpa. The engineering division will require a number of trees, if those are planted to their requirements, they'd be able to meet that standard, and that waiver would no longer be necessary. There are four potential options for the planning commission this evening. Regarding the application, it could either be approved as a preliminary plan, as the last application was, could also be approved as a final plan, if the commission doesn't feel there's a need to see it a second time, at which point it would be forwarded directly to the city commission. The other two options available, the commission can postpone or table any decision, pending more information from either staff or the petitioner, and there's always the option to, to deny the application. In our report, we have referenced that we had recommended that no decision be made until the petitioner submitted, you know, both a traffic study and parking demand analysis. Between the time our reports were published, in tonight's meeting, the petitioner did submit reports for both of those items, they were attached to the meeting materials online for the commission's review, so the petitioner has submitted those documents that we requested. We also stated if the commission does consider any type of approval this evening, that that only be preliminary PUD approval, and that this do come back to the commission a second time before any recommendation is forwarded to the city commission. Again, I can answer any questions on the staff report, and the petitioner and the, his architect is here this evening, and could answer any specific questions regarding the project.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. Any questions? Mr. Hedges? I have a question. You said you recommended that they scale back the project to deal with the lack of parking. What was the petitioner's response when you made that suggestion?
They did, oh, scale back the building, they did review, remove a, a sixth level that they were initially proposing. I believe there was some reduction in the I believe there was some reduction in the number of units as well. I'd have to go back through my plan notes to see what that exact number was.
When they scaled it back to the, what we're seeing tonight, did you ask them after that to consider scaling it again?
No, no, we were going to wait until the planning commission had an opportunity to review it and comment at that time.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hedges? Petitioner here?
Anthony Yesbeck on behalf of the petitioner here tonight. And what we'd like to do tonight is to talk about Royal Oak in Bloom. Not the garden party that happens around Mother's Day, but what's actually happening around the city. This city is blossoming. It's blooming. And it's not an accident. It's been a concerted effort by city officials, the city commission, this planning commission, the DDA, and I apologize to the extent I'm tooting my own horn because I have served on the DDA for the last two years. But there's been an effort in this city to promote growth, to create a momentum that is already paying dividends. Several years ago, a downtown development task force was formed with a cross-section of the community, residents, business people, business owners, city officials. And they made a number of findings and set a number of goals. One of the goals was to create a hundred and sixty thousand or a hundred and eighty thousand square feet of office space. They surpassed that number. As a business owner in downtown Royal Oak, we've already experienced the positive impact of these new neighbors. What we're also enjoying because of this momentum is currently a development at the very south end of downtown, the Singh Development. That's going to be a beautiful, multi-family, mixed-use development. Another wonderful thing that just happened was the opening of the Hyatt Place on another piece of property. We, why are these developments coming to town now? Because it's this momentum, it's this growth, it's this effort to keep Royal Oak moving. We all know what's happening downtown. You hear about it every day. Ferndale and Birmingham are always on our coattails trying to be Royal Oak. So these folks are coming here because there's an opportunity. We are coming before you tonight because we believe there's also an opportunity. And I mentioned those two projects specifically because on the Singh project or the parcel that that Singh project is being constructed on, that parcel served as a frustration to the city of Royal Oak for many years because of the inability to find the proper person to develop that parcel. I think they struggled with that for decades. Similarly, this Frazard lot was an eyesore on Main Street for many, many years. The DDA dealt with that. And finally, because of this momentum, we can enjoy a beautiful Hyatt Place Hotel and apartment building that's going up as we speak. So these are very positive things that have arisen from this momentum that the city has worked very hard to create. I mentioned those items because we stand here today with another opportunity for a corner, Main Street at Catalpa, that's probably the ugliest of all these examples that I've just mentioned. I live across the street, and on a daily basis, as I leave and return to the apartment, I'm tortured by the sight of this closed, old garage with fifteen abandoned cars and a gravel parking lot. And beauty isn't always on the outside. After investigating this project, we find that there's some environmental contamination that has existed for a very long time underneath the beautiful parking lot. So we see an opportunity. And just backing up for a second, as I've been past that project so many times, I've seen a for-sale sign go up, go down, go up, go down. Finally, the last time it went up with a sticker that said, "Reduce price," I finally got ahold of the listing broker and found out that there's two factions in this family. One faction wants to sell, the other wants to not sell. After some persistence and court intervention, we finally got an agreement, a purchase agreement signed by the owners. And so here we are today. We have an opportunity to do something we think very beautiful on this property. How did we decide what would be the best fit for this property? As was referenced in the last hearing, the city conducted a target market analysis a couple of years ago. That target market analysis tells us that thirteen hundred new households are moving into the city of Royal Oak every year. Eighty-five percent of those households are renters. And a great percentage of those renters are people looking for the very type of housing that we're proposing here today. It also tells us that the optimal location for that type of housing is exactly where this project is proposed to go. So I don't think anybody in this room would disagree with the fact that this proposed project, and when I saw the rendering, you can't help but fall in love with it, is a lot better than what exists there today. But judging from the fact that not too many people exited after the last hearing, I'm guessing that they might have a comment or two about the size and scope of what we're proposing today. And that's fine because I think as we go through some of these notes from the planning department, we can satisfactorily respond to these concerns. I'm gonna, I think most of this is wrapped up in density, in the density analysis, and there's some criteria that's laid out in the planning report for density. So I'd like to address those things. Consistency with the master plan. The first comment that the planning department makes is that this proposed project is absolutely consistent with the future land use map of the city. In the last hearing, we talked about the migration of the downtown. I think as you grow the downtown, there has to be a place for these people to go, to live. And we see with the Hyatt Place Hotel, buildings across the street, the apartment complex next to the hotel, that development is migrating north. There's a beautiful, or a four-story project north of the Hollywood Market and some residents above the dental, the dental building on the corner of Crooks and Main Street. The development is certainly migrating north, and the target market analysis tells us that we're going in the right direction. So consistency with the master plan, I think we have it. Innovative planning and design excellence. Our architect, Robert Howard, has assured me that this project will have design excellence. So I'm not going to question him on that. Innovative planning, taking this parking lot and creating a beautiful mixed-use development, office, retail on the main floor, apartments above is extremely pioneering, or at least riding the momentum of what the city has created and taking it to the next level and transforming a, really, an eyesore, a blight at the north end of the city to what could become the gateway of the beginning of downtown Royal Oak. Relationship to adjacent land uses, I think, is very important and in our favor as well because this garage sits back pretty much on the back property line. The adjoining buildings are all up zero lot line, pretty much on Main Street. This proposal obviously would absolutely transform the streetscape, bringing the building up to the property line so it conforms to the rest of Main Street. Pedestrian and vehicular safety provisions, very important and another check in the box for us because right now, currently, on Main Street, which is deemed a main arterial and Catalpa collector, urban collector, there's two curb cuts on Main Street and Catalpa each. Our project proposes to eliminate those curb cuts. That does wonders for the safety of traffic on Main Street and Catalpa. And, you know, we disagree with the suggestion that a traffic study might suggest otherwise because this proposed project would dump out on Center Street and Derby, which doesn't create, and we included a traffic generation letter, and I have Julie Kroll with me. Hi, Julie. And she can talk a little bit more about that. But from a vehicular and safety perspective, eliminating curb cuts is exactly what the city would like to do. Aesthetic beauty, I'm not sure I even have to comment on that. Currently, we know what's there versus this proposed project. What I will reemphasize is that this contamination, the current owners have let it go. It used to be a gas station. They removed some underground storage tanks, but they didn't want to spend the money to complete the closure. And from what I understand from the city staff, that there is contamination there. It abuts the city parking lot that we'll talk about in a minute. And there's a lot of contamination in there that until a developer comes along and wants to get involved in such a thing, it's going to remain there to the detriment of the surrounding area. Provisions for the uses and the users of the project. In addition to the growth that we're seeing in Royal Oak, I think Brian Howard, I live in his building, a building he designed right now, he's one of the architects that are on the forefront of forward thinking. Our building has levers and, as opposed to handles. In addition to the required handicap-accessible units, we will make sure that the hallways are oversized, the doors have levers, the bathrooms are all easily transformed to a handicap-accessible unit. We also have an opportunity to do some green. You know, that's a hundred and eighty-degree swing from contamina, environmentally contaminated property to something that might have a green roof, LED lighting, stormwater collection instead of just detention and used in a creative way. These are the opportunities that we have, especially when you're starting from scratch with a project with a piece of property that's contaminated. Demonstration that the resulting benefits would otherwise be unlikely to be achieved without the PUD. Well, we're talking about the density, the height, the mixed-use project. No developer is going to come to you and propose a project that doesn't work for everybody. Unfortunately, I'm not philanthropic enough at this point to just do something that wouldn't be a successful project for the developer's side as well as for the community and the neighbors. So this project we're proposing is what it needs to be to accomplish, you know, goals for everybody. And I think as part of this criteria, you have to talk about the economic impact. And in theory, obviously, sixty residents will have a positive economic impact on the neighborhood. But I'd like to speak from personal experience. I moved in to Mr. Goodman's building a couple of years ago, and just me personally, there's Crispelli's Bread across the street. I've been there a number of times because they have the greatest cheese Danish in the world. That's just, you know, my real-life experience. I'm the absolute opposite of a handyman. But even I have been over to Friends Hardware and purchased fly swatters and a number of things for our business in downtown Royal Oak. So there is an economic, there will be an incredible economic impact to the surrounding pharmacy, the grocery store, the hair salons, the barber shop. This is all positive for these folks, and hopefully they'll even jazzercise. So in any event, a positive economic impact. The building height, you know, Brian can say a few words, there was some discussion last hearing. But again, this is the type of mid, low-rise to mid-rise housing product that the, that we learned from the TMA that these folks want to live in. And this is what we're proposing. There's a, the dental office at the Crooks and Main Street intersection has apartments above it. There's a four-story building, and then a little bit down the road are the apartments next to the Hyatt Place. This height is coming. What we did do, and it seemed to be humorous to the crowd, but we did originally, our background, I'm an attorney, but we also own a couple of bars in town, we thought as an amenity, we would put on the roof, have a nice rooftop bar and maybe a grill. But there was no way to do that without really making it open to the public and creating something that we didn't really intend. So we had to, we had to nix that. And we also, what we did to try to hide the fact that there is four stories of residential is to try to pull back, and you can see on the rendering, pull back the top floor so it's almost hidden from the street. So you see three levels instead of four. It works very nice. There's patios instead of balconies up there. And it is an effort on our part to reduce a perceived height that's taller than the rest of the, than the rest of the buildings around. The next thing, the elephant in the room, I suppose, is parking. I want to preface this discussion by saying that it's very important, obviously necessary, to persuade the planning commission that parking is, the city lot, along with our ten spots, can accommodate this proposed use. Very important, and we can't move forward without it. It's even more important to persuade the people that are investing in this project that there won't be a parking problem because they don't want to spend, and this is a fifteen million-dollar project, they're certainly not going to invest fifteen million dollars into this neighborhood if they don't believe that parking can work the way we propose it. And there seems to be such, some misconception that we just get to use the city parking lot. That's not the case at all. I don't know, I'm sure before this proposal came about and this hearing was scheduled, ninety percent of the people in this room didn't even know a city parking lot existed on Center Street. I didn't know for the longest time. But now, and I'm sure we'll get to that later, it's a big uproar. But one way or another, whether we lease the lot with maintenance responsibilities or if we outright purchase it with a sharing agreement to keep a sufficient number public, we will have to spend or make a significant investment in this parking lot to satisfy the city. No, we're not requesting something for nothing, and I'm certain if we did, nobody would listen to us. And if anybody did go out and look at that parking lot, you'd see that it's in a disastrous condition. The immediate reaction from the planning department was, "You've got to repair and replace the public alleys that go all the way to Center Street and Crooks." Well, that couldn't be, possibly be our responsibility, but we're just developing one parcel there. Everybody would be assessed to do that. So, but that's not a discussion for tonight or this planning commission. The planning commission only has to concern itself with whether this parking, as we propose it, works. The city commission then will talk to us about what we have to pay, what investment we have to make to make that parking lot beautiful. And that's a discussion that we look forward to hearing. So the question is, does this, does this parking work? How could this possibly work? On the outset, it sounds pretty bad. Sitting back there, I had to go through my notes again to make sure, yeah, yeah, no, no, this works. We did a parking study, the good suggestion of the planning department. We did a parking study from Fleas and Vandenberg. They're one of three preferred engineers from the city of Royal Oak. If you go with the planning departments and the zoning ordinances, admittedly antiquated approach to parking, this project could never work. But that's not what we're proposing. And I think everybody would admit, you have to take a more dynamic approach to parking to get any of these mixed-use developments to work. What we found in this parking analysis is that at nighttime, there is zero cars in that parking lot, zero. So there can be no parking conflict if this proposed project was approved and moved forward at nighttime. No discussion. During the weekends, when the No discussion during the weekends when the office users are, are, are absent. The most, the most cars you'll see in that parking lot is like 20 or 30 cars when the Jazzercise has a class. So again, no discussion, there's no conflict. The only time there will be a conflict, according to this parking study and, and the hours and hours I've spent out there personally looking at the parking lot to convince my investor that this parking could work, is during a couple of popular Jazzercise classes at 9:45 and 11:00 AM on Mondays and Fridays, it appears. It must be a popular instructor or, or a, a, a very popular class because those are the only times that this, that there would be any displacement of cars whatsoever. So, and when that occurs, there's 13 spots on Center Street, two-hour free parking, and seven more on Derby that could accommodate any potential overflow. The methodology that, that Fleece and Vandenberg use has been accepted in the city of Royal Oak, in other areas. Julie, you, you can come up and, and, you know, say a few words and, and corroborate what I'm saying. But it, it's, it talks about the fact that residential people used the lot at one point in time, office people use it at another point in time. And it's not just the methodology. Two years ago or two and a half years ago when I moved into where I live, we had a similar hearing in front of the city commission about parking. There were some neighbors, the funeral home and Friends Hardware, that objected to the transformation of, of the closed building into office and residential. They, they, they were adamant that it was going to hurt their businesses and, and it just wasn't going to work. Well, I've been there for two and a half years and not once has there been any semblance of a parking conflict. Not once in two and a half years. In fact, one of the Friendses lived in the apartment for a, a time. And, and there's a wonderful relationship now because they realized that it was a very positive development in terms of their business. So we have methodology and, and a real-life example of how this type of shared parking works. So again, the analysis here tonight with regard to parking isn't, is it fair? Is it right, is it wrong for, for this project to, to use, to rely on the city parking lot to meet their parking requirements? That's between us and the city commission. Tonight, we just have to assure ourselves that this shared parking methodology is correct, that it works, and that we can rely on it. The only other really thing I'll touch on, and I'm sure you have some questions, is the vehicular access. There is a number of, of waivers that, that were mentioned with regard to the vehicular access. The 103-foot driveway, while the alley is being deemed a driveway because we're parking off of it, nobody, nobody ever uses that alley. The only people that would use the alley would be the 10 people that occupy these spots and the six spots for the Jazzercise. So the, there's not really a, a danger of, of traffic with this driveway. Am I saying that properly or?
Yeah, Brian Howard with HF Architecture. The points that Tony's referencing have to do with, I can't remember which letter it is exactly, but.
F.
I'm going to, I'm going to look at the first one just briefly because I know Dan brought this up in the last project. It has to do with the 10-foot triangular setback. And I think where Doug was referencing this has to do with the trash enclosure. So as somebody's backing out or pulling into that spot, if they're backing out, the trash enclosure actually blocks their view from backing out if somebody's driving north on the alley. What we will do, what we will change or how we will modify this to meet your concern is we're going to flip kind of where the trash is and where the meters are shown so we can pull that dimension back. So we'll meet our 10 feet, 10-foot triangle in that particular area. We do not have a concern on the other side because the entrance on the north end is pulled so far back. Even though that is a two-way alley there, I think Doug's concern had to do with that specific southern-west corner of that. So we will absolutely solve that problem.
Yeah, and that's, that's really it. Uh, the landscaping, this is a, you know.
Well, again, I'll reference back again to the last project. We have the same sort of condition occurring here where we're lacking landscaping, although we do provide a tremendous amount of landscaping for a somewhat. Somewhat zero lot line building. This also has balconies that project out past. So again, we're going to propose the same scenario that we were going to, that we proposed in the last building, which is to pull the facade in, let the balcony still project out, but never project past the property line. What this also helps to solve, again, like the last project, is allow us to step that first floor in a little bit further to provide some more landscaping, like the last project.
And, and one, one other thing I wanted to mention about parking. I mean, you can listen to me and, and you can listen to the methodology. But we also inquired as to, as to the revenue that's generated by that lot from the city. And, and it generates a grand total last year of $12,000. And, and they project $10,000 this year because of the use. That, that, if you do the math at 50 cents an hour, that's 32 minutes a day per spot. The, the lot is useless. This project, this $15 million project would seek to, to maximize the use of that parking lot. And at the same time, create a, a beautiful gateway to the north and, and just have a fantastic project. So today, we're, but as I said, we're, we had a tough time at the beginning getting a purchase agreement signed by this purchaser. So there is some, some time constraints. So what we would ask, what we really need to find out today is, is are you satisfied with what we're proposing? Under, under recommendation C, the, the final PUD plan shall comply with zoning ordinance as well as all applicable codes and ordinances. You know, we can come back and, and talk about the, the enhanced landscaping because we're moving the building back. Something like that. But we really need approval of the density and, and the, and the parking for the project to make sure that you're satisfied that, that works for you. And, and then we can move on to the city commission and, and discuss what kind of relationship and investment we have to make to be able to use that parking lot for this project.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner, Mr. Goddick?
Since you mentioned the off-street parking as one of the big items here, in, in the write-up by the planning department in section E, there's two tables in there. One is what is proposed at, by this city ordinance. It has two spots per unit. And the petition, the bottom table is the one where you're proposing it's one and a half spots per dwelling unit. So I'm just trying to put some numbers to this. So with your request, you're looking at a requirement of 122 spots. You're going to provide, or 132, I'm sorry, you're going to provide 10. I think I heard Doug mention that like 52 spots are already spoken, or 51 spots are already spoken for in the lot next door, leaving only 52 available. So there's a gap between 122 and the 52 that are available. What's, what's the story?
Julie, want to talk a little bit about it?
Good evening. I'm Julie Kroll with Fleece and Vandenberg. So for the, the 52 spots that are spoken for, those were per ordinance and it was from a, a variance that was allowed them to share that lot. But doesn't, doesn't mean that the demand for all of those businesses required all of those spaces. So what we did as part of this study is do an occupancy study for the existing lot. And what we found is that all those 52 spaces weren't necessarily all required. And in fact, the uses for that lot were primarily the Jazzercise between about 10 and 11 in the morning. The day, the lot was relatively underutilized.
So like, even if you were able to utilize the entire lot at 102 spots, that you'd, you'd get your deficiency down to 10 or 12 spots. I understand your parking study with mixed use and time of use and stuff like that. It's just, I'm trying to define all the numbers that you're stretching based on the study, just to frame it. And I guess I have a question for Doug. Is, is it in the city's purview to reassign 52 spots that are already spoken for?
No, as I stated earlier, it, the, the variances have been granted for all the other existing adjacent businesses. There aren't dedicated spots within that parking lot for each of them. In other words, there aren't X number of spaces for the Jazzercise, Y number of spots for the dentist offices, et cetera. What we were just trying to show is nearly all adjacent businesses have needed parking variances. And they've been granted by the ZBA based on the availability of parking within the municipal lot. We were just trying to quantify, if you took the, the actual number of spaces for each variance and add them up, how many spaces would that be? And to compare how many spaces that would equal to that are in that lot. That's what we were just trying to show. But there's not 51 spaces per se that are dedicated for all of those adjacent businesses. It's still a municipal lot. It's first come, first served. Whoever puts money in the meter gets to use those spaces. But we wanted to give you an idea of, you know, if this was another project coming before the city through the normal site plan review procedures, they would have to go before the zoning board of appeals for a variance as have the other properties. And this is kind of what they would look at. How many variances have we granted before? How many spaces do that equal? How many spaces conceptually are available within that lot that we could use for another variance? That if we took those numbers and applied them to each property, that they would equal the number of parking spaces that are required to provide. Now, it's, it's somewhat complicated, but we were trying to give an impression of how many spaces within there could there potentially be used for a waiver or a variance for this project that haven't already been considered for other adjacent businesses.
Okay, I, I guess I misunderstood part of that and thanks for that explanation. It's just conceptually hard to wrap my thoughts around having more spaces granted of variance than the lot has in its capacity. I'll leave it at that for now, thank you.
And if I, if I might, if you don't buy into the, the concept of the shared parking, that different users use the parking lot at different times, you won't be able to satisfy yourself that this lot and our 10 spots can accommodate this proposed use. But the reality is, even if you take those numbers that Doug is talking about, if you take that 50 spots with the 20 or 30 office users that are, that we're bringing there during the day, you still have only 80, 85 spots. It's 113 total. It works. Now, in, in the study, we recognize that a percentage of the residents will still be there during the day and, and she provides for that. So in real life, you have a percentage of the residents during the day, you have the office users during the day. And in real life, the only use of that parking lot, the employees for the doctors at the, at the north end, park on the north end, maybe 10 or 15 cars. And, and when the Jazzercise has a class in the middle of the lot, there's like 20 to 30 cars. Except on Monday and Friday, there could be 50, 55 cars. And, and that's where we talk about the potential displacement, but that's it. And then when the residents come home, the office people leave. So those 55 spots that, that you're talking about that were previously allocated to, by variance, they're not there. So at nighttime, just like in my real-life experience at, at the Goodman property, it works. And, and this is how you park a, a mixed-use development. This is how our investors and this is how we're looking at it. It works in real life. But if you don't accept that, that shared concept, then you, you won't be able to, to accept that, that this proposed use can be accommodated in, in this fashion. Am I saying that right, Julie?
Yes, in non-engineering terms, yes.
Okay.
Doug, I.
In layman's terms.
Excuse me, I, I have a question, Doug. So if, if the city sold this parking lot to the petitioner and there's 103 spaces, 51 spaces or people using those spaces would be displaced?
No, not necessarily, if.
Based on page five of 10 at the top, you've got 51 spaces that have been given past variances.
Yeah, again, that's the ZBA granted variances for those properties based on the availability of spaces within the municipal lot. But no, exact, no spaces were actually dedicated for each of those businesses.
So if 103 cars came up on Monday morning at 7:00 AM and got those spaces, they could have those spaces?
Yes.
Okay. So then let's say the city sold the petitioner this lot and it's 103 parking spaces. And if we go with the page four of nine at the first, under E, they had, they need 152 spaces. They would still be short 49 spaces.
Based on what's required under the zoning ordinance, yes.
Right, okay, so they're still short, even if they own the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Beiki?
This is a, a relatively big building. It's, it's a nice building. It offers some large apartments. Given that this street and very close nearby, there are, you know, residential units, I mean residential home, single-family, as well as restricted street parking. And I would think there'd be some spillover parking potentially generated here with the, with these units. Given the investment in quality and size, why wouldn't there be some onsite underground parking like the previous one we just saw? Given the fact that I think over the long term, the value of the building, the value of the units, if you ever want to flip to condos, you'd want that onsite parking lot and some parking lot behind. And that parking lot may have high value in the long term as these developments go in, that you might want something with underground and above because I think the densification is important. But again, people have cars, people want to park their cars. I'm a big advocate for, again, decoupling the, the payment for the parking apart if people doesn't, a person doesn't have a car. But so, so why not underground? Because this is a large building with a substantial investment, so I think you'd want to take advantage of that space.
We did look at that. And, and this is a bigger piece of property than the last one. The problem is, you have one way to make this parking work, and you have to come in off of Catalpa. The same, the same issue we had with the width of the building on the other one, not making the turn, is the same width as this building. So I can't come in off the alley like I couldn't on the other one. The only way I can make a parking area work is to come off of Catalpa. What we were trying to do is eliminate the drive approaches on Catalpa.
What about Main?
Well, you have the same issue of turning on Main as you do off the alley because the overall width of the property is 100 feet deep. And so as I come in off of Main, I can't make that turn to start going down the ramp. So we, we originally proposed this where we actually had 20 spots, onsite spots, that would allow for it to eliminate, so we did a half the amount of office. The way, the only way that worked was we had to put, we, we brought the parking in all the way to Main Street and planning didn't like that because we then didn't have glazing, we didn't have retail space or office space on Main Street. So that's when we changed and went with this idea of the spots off the alley.
And just kind of to answer your question, Chair President, we, our parking study and, and what they use in, in, in the last hearing is 1.2 spots. I had her run because 1.5 seems to be a comfortable figure. For the planning commission, it's also contained in the target market analysis. 1.5 is, is one car per guest plus. One point five is one car per guest plus one car for every two residents, one and a half cars per dwelling unit. And that same analysis shows, and I think you all have the parking study, there's, this is the, one hundred and thirteen spots available is this line right here. Only in those two afternoons do we exceed or have any displacement from parking. Look at, look at the rest of this chart. It's so far, it barely reaches ninety percent. So the other answer to the question about underground parking is it's apparently not feasible, but it's not necessary. This parking works, and we're willing to invest fifteen million dollars because we're convinced that it does. And to the city, it makes, it makes nothing on that parking lot today, ten thousand dollars a year, and it probably doesn't make much more on demos, but a project of this magnitude, it's going to generate three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax revenue for the city. I mean, this is maximizing the real estate that you have to maximize when you're growing a community, when we have this momentum for growth.
Ms. Douglas.
If you're wrong about the parking, would you consider putting a parking deck, like a one-layer extra level of parking in that lot? I mean, let's say hypothetically, you buy the lot, you're wrong, your neighbors are miserable, and-
We can't rent the apartments.
Or you can't rent the apartments, of course. Would you consider like a one-level parking deck?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Klooster.
Yeah, and I guess this is geared more towards Julie from the parking study. I just want to understand, at the peak time, you're anticipating sixteen vehicles being displaced from that?
Using the one point two, if we use one point five, it's eighteen vehicles. But, and that was based on the current schedule for the Jazzercise, which has a nine forty-five class and an eleven o'clock class, which have an overlap in parking demand for about half hour. So if the Jazzercise schedule changes, or maybe a different instructor, something happens. So based on their current operations, yes, we're seeing a peak at, for two hours, where there would be some displacement potentially in that center street lot. However, there is available on-street two-hour parking, just adjacent to that lot.
So for that eleven o'clock class, the people that would be showing up for that class, it's potential eighteen of those people would be parking in the adjacent neighborhood on-street parking for however long that class is?
And it's an hour, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kasada?
Follow-up for the engineer here. So just to be clear, on page three or four of your report, the graph that the petitioner pointed to, this graph is based on one point five cars for each one of the residential units?
Based on one point two, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineer Parking Generation Manual rate for parking per unit. So one point two spaces per unit, per ITE.
Is that based on the size of the units? What's that based on?
That's just based on hundreds of studies that ITE has vetted over the years, based on units in apartments. So it takes, it boils it down to the average rate for units.
But we know how large these units are. Do you think that average is applicable to these units? I think the smallest ones are seven twenty-five, and they go up over a thousand square feet, and they're two bedrooms. So what's your opinion, is that one point two, does that average apply to these size apartments with two bedrooms?
So based on ITE data, it's based on all bedroom units. So they average studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units, and boil it down to a one point two per unit. They don't have it broken down by beds.
Do you think there's a difference based on the size of the apartments?
In my personal opinion?
Yes.
Yes. There, I believe, you know, there is, based on the size, the number of beds per unit that there potentially is. And there will be more data actually coming out about that in the coming months, published by the Urban Land Institute, ULI. However, that data has not been published yet, so we're only working off of the data that we have available to us at this point in time.
Couple of more questions. Is the data, does it get updated periodically?
It does. And the ITE fifth generation parking came out on January thirty-first, which was the day before, I had already done the study. So what I did is I actually checked to see if the rates had updated prior to submitting it, and they were still at one point two for apartments.
Have the rates changed over the last twenty years?
The data that just came out this last week, and the data that I used in this study, was data in the last, I'm gonna say, five years. So it has not changed in five years.
Is there a trend?
There is a trend for parking, that we're seeing less demand for parking in general than we did ten years ago, just by, because of the behaviors of people and their parking, transportation, and then modal split options that we're seeing more, especially in communities like Royal Oak and Ann Arbor. We see a lot more modal split than we do necessarily.
Okay. So, but I guess what I'm saying is, if that's true, what you just said, we should see a trend, a downward trend in the number of cars needed per apartment in the study. That's what I think. Is that correct or not correct?
Yes. And I believe a lot of cities are going to be looking at their ordinances with this new data that was just released last week.
Okay. So has the trend been less cars per unit needed?
Well, I think the trend has been more that there's less beds per unit, per development than previous. So that's what they're seeing is, you know, before we had larger apartments, more broad-range, less studios, more one- and two-bedroom, which boiled down to a one point two ratio. And now we're seeing a lot more of these one-bedroom units, which a lot of people are living in, you know, just young singles or older retired people that just have one vehicle.
Okay. But you're creating a concern for me, because these are two bedrooms. So I don't know how, I just want to try to draw out of you how these studies apply to this particular project. I realize you're using an average, but this project, we already know what the size of the units are. We know how many bedrooms are being proposed, and I want to know how you think that study, what the relevance of that study is to this project.
So I can only go off of the data that I have available to me, which is based on number of the units, and it's an average. So they don't break it down by number of beds.
Okay. Let me ask one more follow-up question, then I'll shut up. Did you do, in your study here, I'm not sure if I understood correctly, you said you based this on occupancy of these businesses. Did you do empirical studies? Did you have some count that you did on a daily basis for three weeks or something?
Yes.
You did?
Yes.
Okay. So is this chart based on empirical data?
We did occupancy count data, starting back in, I can't remember, I think it was November, November twenty-ninth through January twenty-eighth. So basically, a month's worth of data that was collected in this parking lot to figure out. And I took out the two weeks over Christmas and New Year's, because people do weird stuff over Christmas and New Year's that's not typical. So we took those two weeks out, and we looked at what's going on the rest of that month on average throughout the day.
Okay. So when we look at this chart, you've got actual data on the businesses, and you've overlaid, in theory, that there's a sixty-unit apartment building also using the parking lot.
And the office, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I do a quick cross-examination, Councilor?
Chair says so.
Did I not also ask you to run the same analysis using the one point five average instead of the one point two?
Yes, you did. I did a one point five as well, and it only impacted it by two spaces. So that displacement during the two hours of the Jazzercise. So from a shortage of sixteen, it went to eighteen.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Ms. Beaky, could you have a seat, please, my open, the public hearing?
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm guessing there's quite a few people that want to speak, which is great. I'm glad you're here. You have three minutes. And on the aisle, I just need a name, please.
Hello, my name is Jane McNamara, and I am the owner of the Jazzercise Fitness Center in question. And I'm asking permission to have longer than three minutes.
I'm sorry, three minutes?
Okay, I'll do my best. I'd like to just base, give you a few more facts about the classes than what the last speaker gave you. Here are copies of the last six weeks of class, excuse me, one, two, three, yeah, six weeks of classes, if you could pass those. I have fifty-seven classes a week. We have ten a day, Monday through Thursday, eight a day on Friday, four on Saturday, five on Sunday. If you'll look, for instance, at Sunday, nine forty-five AM, almost at the top of that page, we average forty-eight people at that nine forty-five AM class. We average twenty-seven people at the one o'clock class in four thirty, or excuse me, twenty-one at the four thirty. That's just one indication. Saturdays, which is at the bottom, we average twenty-eight, then thirty-four, then forty-eight, then twenty-four. And that's just in the last six weeks. With terrible weather, we've even had to close for some classes, so it's not even our normal, accurate numbers.
I'm sorry, how many classes did you say you-
We have fifty-seven a week. So the totals here, the last six weeks, we've had three hundred and forty-some classes. We've had seven thousand four hundred and seventy-nine total customers taking classes. Those were three hundred and forty-some classes in the last six weeks. We need that parking lot. I have been, I've been the owner of this business for nineteen years. I started in a church. We just grew exponentially over time, and I had to leave the city for six years because I couldn't find a facility in Royal Oak, so I went to Berkeley from oh-three to oh-eight. Summer of oh-eight, I found this building. At that time, I had three hundred customers. It was all about the size of the space to work out in and the parking. I couldn't do anything without the parking being sufficient. We opened in January of oh-nine, ten years ago, in that center, and in the first week, we had a hundred and seventy-five more people sign up. And by the end of two thousand and nine, I had over five hundred customers. To date, I have over seven hundred customers at that location. And I didn't have a lot of time to prepare for this meeting, because my landlord nor I were informed of this meeting and this, what was happening next door. We didn't get any notification, so I only had a couple of days, and I could give you many, much better numbers for attendance. We need that lot. I don't know why I, the variance shows only seventeen spaces for Jazzercise. I'm not a medical office, I'm a fitness business. I have, like I said, over seven hundred clients coming to five, fifty-seven classes a week. Of course, they don't all come all the time.
Thank you, Ms. McNamara. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Oh, I'm done. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Adges, did we publicly notice this?
Yes, we did.
And that notice goes out, what's the radius, three hundred feet?
Three hundred feet.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir. Back. Need your name, please?
My name is George Boris. I live at five oh-five Catalpa, which is four blocks west of the proposal. I think this discussion is focused on number of parking spaces. What it's failed to really consider is the impact to traffic in the area. What I encounter every day, being at Catalpa and Marywood, is the mad rush from traffic as parents shuttle their kids to school, take them down my street, drop them off where they shouldn't be dropping off, do illegal three-point turns, come back up, and they clog our streets. Any traffic analysis that hasn't considered the traffic in the surrounding area is a flawed analysis. If there was an analysis, you'd get to see that it is way, way crazy come traffic, come schooltime. And adding another sixty residents or a hundred cars, whatever it may be, into that area during rush hour in the morning is going to be chaotic. I really ask that this commission turn down this proposal for the burden that it's going to impose on the local residents. I think it's irresponsible to plan such a huge community in this location. Granted, the demo might not be the nicest-looking building, but putting something in place that it's going to cause a major inconvenience to all the other residents in the area is flawed logic. And I really ask that you turn this proposal down in its entirety. If you want to put something else that's smaller, less units, and has done a more thorough study of the area, then let's talk about that. But I really wish you guys would turn this down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Your name, please?
My name's Randall Painter. I live on Catalpa as well, and I concur with what the last speaker said. It is a mess during rush hour, driving southbound from Brooks or Main is a bottleneck. And sometimes we have to wait two or three light cycles to just traverse that little bit of space from the cemetery area there to Catalpa going southbound. That's one thing. Another thing is an observation. I'm no parking expert analysis or analyst, but I feel kinda, I'm wondering about the Jazzercise. All your parkers are going to want to be close to that business, and now in the back forty. And the same would apply to the owner, to the residents of the new building, should that go into, should that be built. So those are just some observations and my opinion. I'm not anti-improvement or growth at all, but I think that is a little overreaching, that building in that confined space where it is. Whereas the other building on South Washington provided for underground parking, which makes sense. And that's just my humble opinion on all this, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Yes, on the aisle there? After this person. Thank you. That's okay. Your name, please?
Hi, Lisa Cook. Hi, I teach at Jazzercise, and I've been there for many years. A couple of things I want to point out, I'm super concerned about the parking lot situation. When you have arts, beats, and eats, and you do allow some of the big semi-trucks to use that lot, our students, just, it like drops. They don't have anywhere to park, they can't deal with it, and they don't, they don't attend. So if there was like not sufficient parking on a regular basis, our business would not happen. It is an issue. When this sort of thing happens, and some of our students park either on the streets that you were saying overflow would be okay, or what they do, because they don't know any better, they might park in some of the smaller lots closer to the other businesses. And those business owners have come into the studio and approached me personally and said, "I'm sorry, your students are parking in our spaces for our customers. You have to tell them they can't do that." I've even had people come over from the apartments and say, "We have nowhere to park. I have a friend coming over, and all your students are on our street. We can't deal with that." So it is, parking is an issue, even though we are not there. The shared parking thing, you also have to consider, we have classes on the weekends when the residents would be home. We have classes at night, when the residents would be home. So I don't know how the switchy-switchy is going to actually work out. So, and the other thing I just, since I have a little more time, I just want to say, we are kind of a community. Jazzercise isn't just go work out, we're not like Planet Fitness. We are mostly women, we are there for the people of Royal Oak. We're obviously with over seven hundred students. There's a camaraderie there. It's more, it is for Royal Oak residents. It is a big part of the community there. It's not just another place that they could go down the street. It's a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Midgen. My wife and I are the property owners of the Jazzercise building. I had an exactly three-minute speech prepared, but I have to correct some of Tony's and the architect's statements, because they're false. I had an exactly three-minute speech prepared, but I have to correct some Tony's and the architect's statements because they're false. And Doc Hodges, I wish he was here right now because he mentioned that there's fifty-two variances. That's not true. There's other variances across the street, across Catalpa. There's thirty for Crispellis. And across the street, the Goodman Building, Mr. Goodman can tell us, he got, I don't know, nine or fifteen variances. So there's many more than that. And there's many other people that use that lot. Tony mentioned that it's a shared parking concept. It's not a shared parking concept. He wants to own fifty percent of them. He wants us all fight for the remaining parking spaces. Will he say that he'll fight just like we will for those parking spaces? No, he wants to own them. Says that you guys, that doesn't make revenue. That's not true also. Do you know the city has denied, people that petition to get parking passes? The ladies at the medical center have to put quarters in the meter every day because this council or some council in the city denied them parking passes. So on a cold day of zero degrees, they're out there putting pennies or nickels and dimes in the meter to get through their day of work. It's embarrassing. And Crispellis asked for passes for their employees, and it was denied. It was denied because the apartment behind it, they said, "Well, if we come to you, we're going to have to give them to the apartment, and we don't want to give them to those people at apartments." But Tony's Apartments wants to own those spaces. There's, I mean, there's li, there's liability there. It's a civil rights issue. It's a different class of person. We know that. We know Tony's Apartments are marketed towards, towards a different clientele. And you're denied for the, for, for less desirable clientele, I suspect. He says it's the trend for the area. I'm a property owner right there. I have current, during the current zoning, I can put a second floor on. I can beautify the area. If they absorb all the parking, everybody else around that island of a parking lot will not be able to develop their property. It will not be a trend. It will stop the trend. If you want growth in the area, you're going to kill it because nobody else will be able to benefit from it. Talk about safety. It's a serious safety issue. You ever cross the street at Main Street at Catalpa? It's a long path. Cars are very fast. Mr. Hodges said, and previously, previous for Mr. Goodman, or I'm sorry, Mr. Ellison, the mayor, said they can easily walk across the street to this parking lot. You try crossing the street, it's dangerous. Cars are much faster than downtown. He compared to downtown. It's nothing like downtown. And with the shortage of parking, people will park cross-street. They'll be looking for parking spaces. They're not going to find them. They're going to put them at risk, and they put their lives at risk. When you enter the alley and you turn onto Catalpa, right now you have good sightline. It's still very dangerous. I do it all the time. When you build right up to the prompting line, they mentioned how they're conforming with the setbacks. They're conforming with the setbacks on Main Street, not Catalpa. They want to build right to the prompting line, you're going to have no visibility. It's already a difficult left turn. And it's, Catalpa's on an angle. There's a blind spot. There will be a blind spot.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
There's many more things that say this property is terrible.
Yes, please.
Hello, my name's Jane Strunk. I've lived in Roy, Royal Oak for over forty years, and I'm also a longtime customer of Jazzercise. So I want you to know, I am in favor of development of the, that corner that was Demos, but I have a lot of issues with the parking. So Section C, Part Four of the zoning ordinance states, among other points, "That the proposed development shall not result in any unreasonable negative impact upon surrounding properties." Jazzercise, as you now know, is a very business, busy fitness center. I've watched the business grow for many years. Since Jane chose and moved to this location and continued her longtime investments in Royal Oak as a resident and a business owner, this business has grown exponentially. In fact, as a demonstration of Jane's commitment and her contributions in 2017, she was a recipient of the Royal Oak Chamber of Commerce Spirit Award for her positive impact her business has had in, in our city. Jazzercise thrives not only because of the fitness community Jane has created and the benefits of Jazzercise, but because it is so convenient and easy for us customers to access the building, hauling in our gear, which has, which includes heavyweights and mats and shoes and bags, and some people drag suitcases. So accessibility and convenience is crucial. Adequate parking matters for this business to continue to grow and serve our community. Loss of parking, which might occur, probably would occur if this planned unit is approved, equals loss of customers. This parking lot is not useless, I'm quoting. So I ask you first and foremost to support a small business owner over a flawed development proposal that seems to have little positive to offer to the surrounding properties and neighborhoods. In fact, the footprint of this development would block views, compromise the parking for Jazzercise most of all, alter the skyline, the character, and the aesthetics of this critical juncture in our community. So I ask you to support the needs of the Royal Oak Jazzercise Fitness Center. I worry that if things don't go well for Jazzercise, that this may be yet one more Royal Oak business that will have no choice but to leave our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I understand we're all very enthusiastic. Could we please refrain from cheering and clapping and talking in the background? Everyone should have their due time up here, and it'd be nice to have quiet in the background. So I would appreciate you refraining from clapping. Sir? Well, go, go ahead and then, then, that's okay. Go ahead. Your name, sir?
Marty Chynski. I live at two hundred, own and, I live at 202 Catalpa, which is probably the building that's going to be most affected by this. I'm the first duplex on Center Street at Catalpa. I also work at home, so I see what goes on all day long. And to think that at five o'clock, six o'clock, there aren't a million cars going to Jazzercise and other businesses there is just absurd. The other thing is you get a lot of traffic from people on Catalpa. They come down, they come upwardward, come across on Catalpa, and then use one of the three main street crooks in Rochester Road to go north. And to make a left onto Catalpa at five o'clock is, is a big challenge. I'm concerned that Jazzercise wasn't notified, and I wonder how many other businesses that use that lot were not notified because there's two dental offices, there's a urologist, there's a new chef that's there, there's a dental lab. Nobody's here from those businesses, and they're going to be affected greatly from that. So I think the scale of the building is wrong. I, if I didn't know that that was that lot, I would say, how could that be? That that size building is going on that size lot, and that they're going to use up the parking. There is no parking available on Center Street in the evenings because those apartments use that, that parking along there. And Jazzercise, you heard the numbers, I, I don't think it's right that you cut her off when she had a lot of statistics. I mean, she's going to be greatly affected by it. My wife is a Jazzercise person. She's one of the only ones that walks because we live across the street. But it's wrong. It's too big. It's, it's, it's going to create a lot of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Uh, sir, you are next. Your name, please?
Good evening. My name's Ethan Holtz. I'm an attorney, and I represent Adelphia Properties, one of the neighboring property owners. I thank the commission for the time tonight. I am here to raise a few questions for the commission to consider before its vote and on a going-forward basis. Under the zoning ordinance, the planned unit development is essentially free pass to evade all of the other zoning requirements. But it has its own special requirements in order to do that. And one of them, found in Section C two, is that the proposed type and density of use shall not result in an unreasonable increase in the need for or burden upon public services, facilities, streets, and utilities. So I'd, I'd ask the commission how you can even consider meeting that standard when the developer has not submitted a traffic study, an environmental, economic impact study. We've heard about the parking study that was submitted, and it appears thrown together in response to the, Mr. Hedges's request for one, which I think was prudent, but objective studies are what, what's needed. The developer has his own interests, and I'll leave it at that, in producing a study that meets what the commission, he thinks the commission would like to hear. But you've already heard evidence to the contrary on that. I would also like to address the issue of the variances granted to the surrounding business owners. Those are property rights that, that this commission long ago granted to those owners. To the extent that the variances are eliminated by the sale or lease of the, the parking lot and those resources depleted, I'd ask that the commission consider the possibility that they are depriving those property owners of a vested right that they obtained long ago. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. In the back. Your name again, sir?
Rick Kralowski. The property owner, a few speakers have been, stole a little of my thunder, but I would just like to say that, yes, if you basically grant this petitioner complete usage of the parking lot, you are going to limit development of any of the buildings around it. How do we know? Because it's happening to one of the owners of the former bank building. It's now a vacant lot. He went before the DDA to get parking passes because he wanted to build office space on top of his building, and said he couldn't get them because they were already leased out to the Atkins Building, and there weren't any more parking passes available. So in essence, he gets first in, he gets all the, the benefit. That is not the way this is supposed to work. Secondly, the notion that because you have a blighted corner, that you just crumple up all the zoning requirements is nonsense, absolute nonsense. This building is too big. It's underparked. The reason he's not building any parking is because he doesn't want to pay the money. It's much easier to just get an agreement with the city to basically own slash rent the parking lot and, and go on from there. There's, the, the parking study is based on an average, whereas correctly pointed out, it has nothing to do with how many bill, how many beds and how many tenants you're going to have per, per apartment building. People don't take Uber to work yet. I mean, maybe they will, but they certainly don't yet. They take a lot of Uber for entertainment. They take Uber for small trips. They do not take Uber to work. The not, the notion that you're not, that you're suddenly going to have less cars than two per, a two-bedroom apartment is, is just nonsense. It's, it's not happening. This is still very much of a sprawl city, and unless everybody's got a job downtown, they're going to drive to work. The notion that you want to cut, don't have any cuts on Catalpa is preventing you from doing underground parking is just, I mean, you've really got to reach there. And at the very least, you could require a one-story parking structure over the current parking, parking lot to accommodate his tenants. There's no reason whatsoever that we're going to limit the growth of and usage of the current property owners in the area because he wants to suck up all the available parking. What if they want to change hours? What if they want to change, change usage of their property? What if they want to expand? They're not allowed to because, or they're going to have to build their own parking because he's in first? That's nonsense. There's a guy in Washington who's willing to provide his own parking. He should be required to do, do, do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Halleck. Welcome.
Everyone, my name is Tom Halleck, 210 North Center. I spent fourteen years on the planning commission, and I've never seen such a ludicrous plan in my entire life. It, it's absurd. We'll just start out with the simple fact that the only reason that this developer wants to grab the parking lot is because he doesn't want to pay for his parking. It's as simple as that. So every time somebody has a parking lot somewhere near him, we're going to just let him take over the parking lot? That's ridiculous. And you, as noted before by other people, you completely usurp the possibility of any of the other businesses expanding or adding residential, which you want more residential. They can't do it. There won't be any spaces. They will get denied. So like was pointed out, this isn't expanding on the growth. This is a stopper. That's the end of that area. Nothing else will grow in that area. It can't. There's no place for it to go. It's also monolithically out of scale with everything else. It, it's just ridiculous. The amount of variances that are being asked for here are absurd. They need to provide their own parking, whether they do a deck, whether they do it underneath. There's no difference between there and 1003 South Washington where they have to supply at all. The last thing I would mention here is incumbent on people on boards that if they have a conflict of interest, they need to recuse themselves. And we have that right now. The mayor has accepted $7,850 in campaign donations from the developers and their associates. And Commissioner Douglas has accepted $2,900 worth of campaign donations. Nobody would quibble about one, two, three, four hundred dollars, but when you start reaching thousands, three thousand, four thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, then you need to recuse yourself because you do have a conflict of interest and appearance of impropriety. And if any of you have been talked to in a positive manner regarding this project by either the mayor or Commissioner Douglas, you also need to abstain because that's a tainted vote, and you can't do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halleck. Anyone else? Yes, with the hat. Your name, sir?
Clark Campbell, East University, Royal Oak. Commissioners, I walked here tonight. I walked in one direction to get here. To get home, I have to walk in the other direction. It stands to reason, therefore, that a directional trip is in one direction. An out-and-back trip, to my way of thinking, is known as a round trip. A round trip would be in at least two directions. The memo submitted by Fleisch and Vandenberg in the packet indicates that the project does not meet the threshold to require a traffic study, even though it clearly states that "A traffic impact assessment is required for any proposed development expected to generate between fifty and ninety-nine peak hour directional trips." In their own math section, well, using that logic, the PUD plan for the 1005 North Main does require a traffic study based on the numbers they presented. The total of fifty-six trips, directional trips in the AM peak hour exceeds the requisite threshold of fifty. One additional item to note, I believe the configuration of this particular intersection where Catalpa and Gardenia intersect with the confluence of Main Street, Rochester Road, and Crooks Road is a unique configuration in our town that absolutely requires a comprehensive traffic study. It is not a simple two-cross-street intersection. Our recent Main Street construction this past summer made it painfully obvious how little traffic it takes to completely gridlock this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hello. Hello, I'm Christine Raponis. I am one of the owners of 1019 North Main. My tenant is Jazzercise. And I want to address what the petitioner has been requesting. He requested, we talked about density, and according to our neighborhood business zoning, he could get a special, I think it's, there's a special request you can get where you can be thirty feet high, but he's proposing fifty-two feet. H and R had, in his previous presentation, had stressed that that building was in similar stature with the parking structure next to him. Well, as you can see, this is not in similar stature as the surrounding areas. Along with your planning department in the memorandum had even said that. They even stated that the- They even stated that the volume of traffic that this would generate with their units, that this may not be the suitable site for it. And frankly, I'm not against development, but I think he should be suitable with the stature, the 30 feet. I think that the mixed use is fine. I don't mind if he gets a few variances, but frankly, to take half of a parking when that lot was originally dedicated and thought, because those businesses did not have any parking. A lot of what his problems have been is self-imposed by himself. I mean, to have 60 dwellings, I don't care how you look at it, you're gonna at least have one car for each, and then you're gonna have at least, he needs, the businesses are going to have their employees, they're going to have their customers, along with the dental, the other dental, the new chef, us, it just doesn't work. And to say that he gets to lease it, is that something that the city wants to go down? That he gets to lease it? But frankly, I think he can do what he wants at a smaller stature and provide his own parking. And a lot of what he's doing is self-imposed. His hardships are self-imposed. If it's too expensive to do it, then shrink it, or maybe the people who are selling it are asking too much money. But you cannot take it. If Jazzercise leaves, how am I going to get a new tenant? I had, um, Kelly Services look at the building. They needed a minimum of 24 spaces. So I'm not gonna be able to get anyone at a later date. Nobody. 'Cause I'm not gonna have the parking. And so, or if I have to come to you and I change the use to maybe a restaurant or office, and there's gonna be so many cars needed, I'm gonna get, need to get a variance, I'm not gonna be able to. There's not gonna be any spots. So I'm asking that this has gotta be much smaller in stature, meet the current neighborhood business, special land use, just like they did at the Goodman Property, just like the dentist did down
Thank you.
From the corner of me.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, in the far back.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Bork. I own Sands Barber Shop at 937 North Main. I've been there, I've owned the business for 23 years now, and that barber shop has been there for about 88 years. And, uh, I just wanna say, I am also for development, but, uh, you know, our
Parking is limited.
We share the Crispellis parking lot, we all get along, it's been a great addition to our corner, but we do have a dance studio, or a ballet, uh, studio, a photography studio, a, um, a tax accountant on that corner, and of course, me, the barber shop. And so the concern for us would be that people would be going to visit people over there, and they would be running across Catalpa to park in our parking lot. And we are limited with, you know, it, that is a small parking lot for what it's supporting, but we're making it work, and it's been a, it's been a good experience. But, uh, that's just a lofty project for that corner, and so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, on the, yes. Your name, please?
Deb Campbell, East University. I live in Royal Oak forty years, and, uh, in the neighborhood next, near the development twenty-five years or so. I've driven past this defunct service station for many years. This corner no doubt begs for redevelopment, and I've been hopefully waiting for something wonderful that would benefit the community to show up. I believe that, I'm not anti-development, I believe that development should be responsible and balanced and sustainable, and not jeopardize the safety and well-being of the residents and the livelihood of the small businesses that serve us. I believe that development should follow our master plan and zoning ordinance. Those documents and laws are there to protect us. This body is supposed to uphold these protections, looked at for our best interests, not the financial interests of developers or political campaign contribute, contributors. I'm happy to see that Mayor Fornier is absent tonight, because I would ask him to abstain if he was. Between Mayor Fornier and Commissioner Douglas, a great deal of camp, of campaign contributions were, were received. I'm not gonna go over, there are big deviations to code, they want a lot of favors the developers are asking for. I'm not gonna go over all those, we've done, but I do wanna, I do wanna address a couple of things that the developer's representative said that I, that I have a problem with. I feel the biggest and most damaging favor of all that this developer wants is the waiver of 152 other required parking spaces by way of filling up the city parking lot that allows the surrounding businesses to function. The methodology, as he calls it, that the neighborhood, um, the neighborhoods surrounding the area will be overflow parking for his project is absolutely unacceptable. This is not a useless parking lot. This is our neighborhood parking lot, these are our neighborhood businesses. Bill Williams Studio, I had my graduation photo taken there, all of our four sons have had their graduation photos taken there, and that is not a useless parking lot. That is full at graduation time, it's full at, uh, homecoming time, so, yeah, yeah, that's our parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, right here in front? Your name, sir?
My name's Leonard Framlin. I own the building just to the west of the project, 110 through 116 Catalpa. And I met Tony last Friday, and he kinda, you know, gave me the sales pitch on what he's working on and everything, and I'd had time over the weekend to study the documents. I do have a problem with the parking. And specifically, the data from the engineer, uh, there's several things that I disagree with. Number one, it was just a snapshot of a time period in November, or I'm sorry, mostly December, a little bit of January, uh, and that doesn't, that does not compare to other times of the year, peak times of the year in the summertime when there's a lot more happening, like some of the other speakers have mentioned. So I think that, that point is flawed. The, nobody, nobody petitioned, or nobody polled the, uh, the owners, the property owners. You know, I had essentially two vacancies during that time. So if, 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 you know, one's leased out and it's gonna start generating some more action and more cars parking, but nobody asked me how many, you know, if I had any vacancies and adjusted the numbers for that. And lastly, I know that the, the study shows that they're gonna, uh, not count certain weeks, but if you look at the dates, one sheet shows days during the week, and the other sheet shows day, weekends, there's days missing that, that are not consistent. Look at the dates and you'll see what I'm talking about. So for those reasons, I oppose the project, I'd like to see something smaller that would make more sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Good for you, Tom. Bye, someone there? Yes.
I own a business, I owned a business on Catalpa. My business was first located downtown. I started at 519 South Washington, I moved around the corner to 210 Sixth Street downtown for 28 years plus. I moved out of the downtown because my customers were having trouble getting to my business because of parking, well, I'm not gonna go into that. Anyhow, it took a lot of guts as far as I was concerned. My ulcer was aching for weeks. I moved up to 123 Catalpa. And I was there for six years, and I retired, and I sold the business. So the business is still there. These people who have spoken tonight were all my neighbors. That's a great north Royal Oak. We could walk, I could walk over whenever I needed something from Friends Hardware, I could walk around the corner to talk to Bonnie, I could go down to Crispellis, and it was our neighborhood. I know Tony, and Tony, it's too big for our neighborhood. It is a neighborhood, and I think it's way too big. As far as the parking lot's concerned, you have to sit in the chair at my counter and look out my window, 'cause I look right down Center Street. Traffic going in and out of that parking lot is constant all day long, between the doctor's offices, Bill Williams, Jazzercise, of course, just anybody else, but we also, we had a little dance studio down the street. They took away the parking on Main Street in that area, so they couldn't park there anymore. So they moved over to the parking lot, but that corner, I have witnessed several accidents, thank God, no fatalities, but I have seen, and at rush hour, it's unbelievable. Please, I don't mind development, we've all looked at demos forever and going, have to yell and scream to get him, to get his junk cars out of there, but you know what? We need something that fits the neighborhood, I really think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Hello, my name is Joel Schmidt. What I would like to speak about today would be what I appear to see as an abuse of the PUD process as an end-around to the existing zoning for an existing parcel, for the sole goal of maximizing developable area. In 1980, when the PUD provisions were added to the zoning enabling acts in the state of Michigan, they were intended to improve zoning by making it more flexible, with the intent of allowing mixed land uses on a single development, of clustering and providing flexible design for multiple parcels. It was never intended to be a tool for a single parcel to get around present zoning requirements, as this petitioner and others in our city have done. So I would say that with this parcel, this activity must stop. And Madam Douglas, if you feel that the zoning is antiquated and not allowing for the type of development you support, then let's fix the zoning, but let's stop this practice of using PUDs to get around zoning requirements that are here to protect the public good. For what you failed to recognize and mention in your lecture to us was that in favoring these developments, you are essentially changing the historic character of our neighborhood, allowing big box development to dominate the main streets. I prepared a little graph to show everyone what current zoning would allow and what the petitioner is asking. So if you like a big box to become the, become the characteristic that defines Royal Oak, a big, banal, beige box, by, by all means, continue this practice. But if we would like to keep the character and historic qualities of our neighborhoods, then stop this practice and fix the zoning and proceed with sensible pedestrian-oriented development. Thank you.
Madam here, Ms. Douglas.
Perhaps you could remind our, uh, people who are not familiar with our process, that the protocol is to address the commission as a whole and not individual members of the commission.
Yes, I was going to do that, thank you for bringing that up. We're trying to be polite here and make sure everyone has their due process in speaking. So if you could address the commission as a whole, it would be much, much more proper. Would appreciate that. Is there anyone else? Yes, on the aisle.
Hi, my name's Carrie Dunneback. I've lived here in Royal Oak for fifteen years, and I currently live on Ellen, homeowner in Royal Oak for fifteen years. I've recently become a Jazzercise instructor, and yes, I do run classes there. I wasn't planning to speak to you tonight, but I take high offense at the numbers that were presented from the developer in, um, telling you how many cars are actually in that parking lot. I love the copy that Jane, the owner of Jazzercise, that she gave you with class numbers, and I'd like to draw your attention. First one she pointed out happened to be my class. Yes, I'm a newer instructor, but I wanna show you that there are Sundays where I texted her when I got home, I had 70 customers in my class. Once again, new instructor, and as the developer mentioned, maybe certain instructors draw a crowd. I'm the new girl, and yeah, I'm kicking some button there, and on a side note, I'd like to invite all of you to my next class at 5:45, it's on me commission. Come out and try it and see how many customers are in there, and please, please note the feel, the family feel in the room, because that's something that we would lose if we didn't have that parking lot. People wouldn't come in there. So again, check the numbers, and if the numbers that they gave you, the developer, on class numbers and when they're seeing the most, if they've never been there on the Sundays when I'm teaching, and I've got that 70-member group in there, and the windows are steamed up, maybe you couldn't see through the steam in the windows, not sure, but that's when the numbers are there, and if those numbers they presented to you are incorrect, what else is incorrect that they presented to you? It's blown out of proportion, just like the size of this facility. I'd love to see development, I'm in Royal Oak, I visit the businesses in Royal Oak, and I'm all about people moving to Royal Oak, but this doesn't fit with what's been, what's been used and the way that parking lot is currently being used. It's not empty. I fill it on Sunday mornings. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any other hands, we'll close the public hearing. And thank you all for coming out, appreciate that. Okay, we're gonna bring it, excuse me, I'm, please, bring it back to this side, side of the table for the commission to discuss, have any questions, discussion, questions for the petitioner? Mr. Hendges, any remarks?
I have a question regarding traffic studies.
Sure.
Um, what has been the most recent traffic studies done for this intersection? I, I take, um, I live in the area and I walk avidly all around, um, different places, and the traffic in this area, especially with the three streets, as someone else mentioned coming in, is quite complex, um, and in the school and all of that. Um, I, anyway, so what has been the traffic studies recently? What have we been looking at? Because I, I think obviously a, a structure of this size, and regardless of where the parking is, which I still think should be within the structure, the traffic is another matter that is quite extensive.
I would have to get the latest, uh, traffic data that the engineering division has. They have not yet had a chance to provide that to us or to review the study that the petitioner has provided. That's something we would have to bring back at a, another meeting or another review of this to have, uh, just in the time that it, we've received it, staff members that would typically look at something like this have not been available. So there hasn't been any thorough review of the, both either the traffic study or the parking analysis, uh, that they gave us. If the commission desires, we can have, you know, engineering look at it and compare it to the traffic counts and the traffic data they have for that intersection.
I, I personally, I think that the traffic issue and then also the access issue and where the cars will be moving about, um, again, in a neighborhood that has limited side street parking and a lot of dead-end streets and such, I think it would be prudent to look at this and, um, if the building isn't significantly scaled down from what it is now.
Mr. Chrisana?
I want a follow-up question, just for, just to clarify, there's parking study, we, we have one you need to look at. Traffic study, is, is a traffic study required or not required here?
There's no hard and fast requirement for it, spelled out in the zoning ordinance, we're within the PUD standards, uh, but those standards do give us enough leeway to require one or to request one, uh, if we feel it's necessary. And in this situation, we did, that's why we requested one from the petitioner. We were not anticipating receiving one before the meeting, uh, but we did get that. We have just given into a preliminary review, uh, of the numbers that they cite from the ITE trip generation manuals, do appear to be consistent with what we would have calculated, but how those impact the current traffic numbers on the surrounding streets. But how those impact the current traffic numbers on the surrounding streets, that we haven't had a chance to get into yet.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Douglas?
I have a question for Mr. Liss.
Yes, ma'am.
Mark, hi. Is a parking variance, a zoning variance for parking, a property right?
Yes, it is.
So would the, those properties that have been granted a variance if we, say, sold a parking lot, have cause for action against the city?
It might be, but you'd have to take a look at some, at what the specifics of those variances were.
So that's...
Some of them could have been...
Not all variances are created equal?
Well, some of them, it could be contingent. And if the business moves, the variance could disappear. There, there could be some contingencies, so I couldn't really say. But it might create a cause of action.
Okay, thanks.
Good question, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion? Mr. Goddick?
I, I wasn't prepared to make a motion, but listening to some of the comments by the public, I think some people know how I feel about density and the size of the unit doesn't, for me, work in this particular location. If it was scaled back and a parking deck added, I might get behind something like this. But it is gonna have an impact on the neighboring businesses. I, I think that's obvious. And, and the petitioner himself said if I can't buy into the shared parking, that it wouldn't work. And I can't buy into the shared parking on it as presented, so I can't support this particular development as presented. I would welcome something different that was less dense and increase the parking. And I think this, the site is ripe for development. I appreciate someone taking this kind of effort, but it's not a good plan.
Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, I think the scale is not right here, but what's gonna go on that property? I mean, we don't see demand, we're not gonna see demand for offices there. We struggle to put retail in our downtown. This is a likely spot for residential development. Even if this were, let us say, three stories of residential development, you probably still are going to generate enough parking needs to fill up that parking lot. We've heard people say, well, you know, why should the first, first come be first served? And yet, if not this project, let us say, the owner of the, the Golden Restaurant next door and Jazzercise, let's say they both built new buildings there that were completely within the zoning requirements, 30 feet tall, whatever. It is possible that those businesses could then use, take up all of the parking in that parking lot, and we'd be back to the same thing. So, I mean, I think we, as, as a city and our planning department maybe needs, and our public services department, since they're the one that control the parking lot, need to step back and maybe take a more comprehensive look at this block and see what we can do with what's there and what the demand is to come up with a solution that meets multiple needs.
Mr. Goddick?
That's a fair statement, and, and the only exception I have is, we shouldn't accept a marginally bad plan based on what we think might not work at this site. If I can explain that, it's like, you know, what else is gonna go there? Hopefully, something really good will go there. And this is a step in that direction, it's just a too big of a step. Scale it back, residential's great here, mixed use. I do agree that our, our zoning requirements are dated, and I, I think they need to be changed because PUDs are being abused, because there are no limits on them. We should have a zoning requirement that allows more dense developments. But right now, we don't have any restrictions, so we have this, this particular unit on this small one, that's not gonna work.
Mr. Kloster?
Yeah, so I, I think this, I tend to be in favor of high dense, highly dense developments because they create pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. This seems to be really excessive for the neighborhood that it's, that it's going in. It's, it's out of scale, and I think it's, it's pretty evident that there is a high potential for adverse effects on the surrounding businesses, residents, property owners, and it's, it's really difficult to support a proposal like this that, that has such high potential for negative impact.
Mr. Casada?
All right, I, I'll be a little contrarian here. I, I don't think this is out of scale. I think that that's a huge intersection there. I think a significant structure could go there. That's just my opinion about that. I do have concerns about the parking as well, and I have concerns about the, the lack of flexibility. That, I, it, I am concerned that if you're going to max out the parking and even exceed it at peaks, and, and I didn't see, quite frankly, I was a little concerned about Saturday. Saturday, the people are in the, in the apartments, the businesses are going, you've got the Jazzercise, I think the dentist is open on, on Saturday. I could see that that could be a problem, too. So the parking is an issue. I'm also concerned about the fact that using 1.3 or even 1.5 when we have two, two-bedroom apartments, that's all concerned to me. If, but I also heard the petitioner say he would consider putting a one-story deck on. My way of thinking, if, if you put a deck in the back, if the petitioner would put a deck in the back with 60 or 80 parking spots, or, I mean, it would, it would solve a lot of the problems that we heard here today. So I don't know if that's possible. I don't know how serious the petitioner was, but it certainly solved the problem, and it would create more flexibility in the future. So the property owners around that corner, both south and southwest and, and immediately north, those people would, would have flexibility they don't have now. So I think that is a, a potential solution. But overall, I like the project. I like pulling it back, just like the South Washington one, because I also like the balconies, but I don't like them overhanging. So I, I would like to see the petitioner have an opportunity to further discuss a potential deck in the back, because I think it could, could work that way. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Casada. Anyone else? Ms. Douglas?
Mr. Hedges, if we reject this plan, what are the petitioner's options for coming back to us with a smaller project, a project where they provide parking, something that responds to what we've heard here today and what they're hearing from the commission? Do they have to wait a year before reapplying?
Technically, if A, an application is denied, there is a provision in the ordinance that the same application can't be resubmitted for a one-year period. The application would have to be significantly different, although that isn't defined within the ordinance. You know, if they come back, if it's denied and they come back with something that essentially is office-on-the-ground level and upward-level dwelling units, I, I can't speak for the director, but that would probably be considered, you know, the same project, just with, you know, fewer units and lower density and lower height. I mean, that's what, you know, a denial would do. It would probably kick in that provision, so anything they come back with would, you know, essentially have to be a different plan that's, you know, different than what they're showing today than just simply fewer number of units. Yeah, if the application is tabled or postponed, then the petitioner would have the opportunity to, you know, reassess it and, you know, come up with changes that address some of your comments and those of the public tonight. You know, they would have the opportunity to revise it and bring something back to you that you may find more suitable. But if it's, if it's denied, their opportunities to do that would be limited.
May we hear, I'm sorry. I would still have the floor.
Okay.
Maybe, I have a question for the petitioner? I mean, you've heard what you've heard, you've heard today. Would you like an opportunity to come back with something smaller, something that meets the needs of what you've heard here? Or, I'm putting you on the spot here, or do you want us to just say no and it'll take a year before you can bring it back again?
I think, and I think a number of people have said, this is a worthwhile project if it was modified a bit, or if parking was addressed a bit. So I think we would like the opportunity to reassess it, knowing that those are, are two concerns, and, and see if we can come up with something that, that works for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Still have the floor?
(inaudible).
Huh? It's like, just, I saw them move. Okay, I'll stop now, but I may have a motion in a minute.
Mr. Goddick?
Doug, I, I kinda didn't get a clear answer to Commissioner Douglas's question. If, if, is this a two-parter or a one-parter as far as rezoning of PUD on-site plan? Is that a two-part?
Typically, a PUD is a, actually, a three-step process. The first step, preliminary plan review, the planning commission, which is what this application is. They typically then go on to the second step, which is a final plan review by the planning commission. And then that, the final plan review, it goes to the city commission for consideration of rezoning the property and the development agreement.
I misspoke my question. For us to approve or deny or table, are there two actions you're looking from us tonight with, one for the PUD rezoning and one for the site plan, or are they a combo?
No, if you're considering, you know, postponing it to give the petitioner an opportunity to revise their plans, it would just be a one, a single resolution or motion that would be needed.
How about a denial?
Same, it would just be a one, one motion, a resolution.
In a denial, with, he could still come, the petitioner could still come back if he drops a floor and adds parking, he can still come back in less than a year because that's a significant change in the plan.
We'd have to see the plan to make that determination. It's hard to say for certain if that would be considered significantly different enough to bring it back. That's one I can't give you a definite answer on tonight, that yes, we'd be able to bring it back, or no, we wouldn't. It's gonna depend upon if this is denied, what new plan he brings to us.
Thank you.
So, I have the floor now. I'm gonna make a comment. So I, I think, I, I love development on this corner. I do not like this development on this corner. It's too big, it's too much, it's out of scale, it does not fit with this neighborhood. It is, it is not the extension of Royal Oak that, that I, as a planning commission, would be looking for in this area. It, obviously, it just does not fit. It doesn't make sense to me. The parking, the lack of parking is, is very short-sighted. So I, I would be likely to, if there was a motion to deny, to support that, but I also would be listening to my fellow commissioners on a motion to postpone if we're confident that the petitioner could come back with something that would be much more welcoming and, and agreeable in this location. Ms. Beeky, sorry about that.
No, no, that's okay. Again, listening to all that we've heard here, and again, considering the, the multiple streets that come to that space and, and the lack of parking, I'd be inclined to motion to deny in looking for something more in line with neighborhood businesses, so much of what you said, unless there's significant adjustments to this, because I, I don't see it functioning well in this space, as much as I like the concept of this kind of dense residential and mixed use.
Mr. Goddick?
I'd like to make a motion to deny rezoning and plan unit, preliminary site plan, 190204.
There's been a motion to deny, is there support?
Support.
Motion by Mr. Goddick, support by Ms. Beeky. Any discussion on this motion? Ms. Douglas?
We heard a number of people here tonight say that they would love to see something done with this site that's been an eyesore on our city for as long as I've lived here and certainly longer. And we've also heard people say that they would welcome development on this site, but just not at this scale. And so I'm inclined to vote against the motion to deny, and, but would support a motion to postpone a decision, give them a chance that mean they, they seem earnest, and either they can come up with a plan that meets the needs of the community as they've heard here or not, but I would like to give them that opportunity. So no disrespect, but I'm gonna vote against your motion.
Mr. Goddick?
No respect taken. I, I think they need to make a significant change to convince the planning department that this would be a development that would work, and I think this motion stands on its merits.
Fair enough. Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, there's been a motion to deny, Mr. Goddick, supported by Ms. Beeky. Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No.
Four to two, motion to deny, passes.[1562.76][1562.76](applause) Mr. Casada and Ms. Douglas. Let's take a three-minute break. Five-minute break.
Is the meeting still going?[1586.72][1586.72](laughing) No, I'm joking. Just stand up, my hips are locking up. Oh, I should text my husband, so we think I'm disappearing.[1595.64][1595.64](laughing) I promised him I'd come right back after this meeting.[1600.44][1604.24](music)
I could request that in the future, that this, this commission notify businesses...[1648.44][1648.44](music)
If you're, if you're not here for the next site plan, could you please clear? Thank you. Thank you. Tom, we're back. Next order of business is item number three. This is a site plan to demolish the motel, Serenade Motel, and construct automobile parts retail store Autozone at 28202 Woodward Avenue. Is that correctly, Ser- Serenade, is that?
I think so.
I don't think I've ever said that out loud before.
I just see it on the screen.
I just see it, right. Thank you, Mr. Hedges.
Yes, this application was actually before you, I believe, at your last October 9th, 2018 regular meeting. The application was postponed at that time. I believe that was at the request of the petitioner. Allowed them the opportunity to revise their plans, to address some of the staff's comments that were in initial staff report. The petitioner has in fact done that. The plan before you this evening is quite a bit different than the one that you saw in October. Primarily, the building has been shifted much farther to the north. And there's been some other small changes made. They've responded to a number of the contingencies we had in our last report. The proposed building would require a height variance from the zoning board of appeals. Within the general business zoning district along Woodward Avenue, there is a maximum building height of 30 feet. The building as proposed to the roof line is 32 feet. A minimal variance, but still a variance, just the same, would be required. So, pending site, any approval of the planning commission this evening, the petitioner would have to seek a variance from the zoning board of appeals for the height of the building. Our other contingencies, there are three of them that are discretionary items for the planning commission to consider this evening. The first one is the, on the list, contingency number two as far as the placement of their primary building ordinances in relation to their Woodward Avenue. The second is the facade elevations facing Woodward Avenue and the amount of storefront windows. That is another discretionary item for the planning commission under the zoning ordinance. And the last would be the screening that would be required along either the east rear lot line or on the opposite side of the alley. In some projects, that screening has been required by the planning commission, and other times it has not. If the commission is satisfied with the petitioner's plans on three of those items, they could be eliminated. Or if you would like to require some of those are specific revisions, those should be clarified in any motion regarding the site plan. The remaining items are all either boilerplate items we require of all developments, or some specifically for automobile retail stores, specifically regarding the servicing of vehicles within the parking lot or within adjacent rights of way. All loading and unloading to take place from either the alley or the parking lot. There are a list of items that the engineering division will require regarding improvements to the right-of-way, more specifically along Woodward Avenue. And then our remaining items regarding exterior lighting, signage, performance bonds, and meeting other code requirements during permitting. Again, the, again, the petitioner has addressed most of the concerns the staff had in the previous review and have submitted quite an improved plan. It's, it's had met most of the items we were concerned about previously.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. Any questions for Mr. Hedges? Not seen, is the petitioner here? Welcome.
Good afternoon, my name's Wesley Berlin. I am Westfarton Engineering, Autozone Civil Engineering Consultant. Here representing Autozone this evening, I would just like to state a few things. They're very excited about this project. They think it's a great opportunity to, to bring a business to the city, redevelop this property. We think there's some pretty significant aesthetic and functional improvements that we're proposing as part of this project. And basically, after, after this stop here, we'll be moving towards full design plans and we look forward to getting our permits and getting this built as quickly as possible. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Mr. Goddard?
Mr. Hedges listed out 12 contingencies. Are you familiar with those and kind of in compliance?
Is that items one through 12 in the staff report?
It is.
Okay. Do you want me to go through those?
No, I just want to know you'd be happy with them.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Good, that's all I had.
Question, the sign, is, are you gonna sell that to, who are the guys that go in and take the?
Scrappers?
No, the antique folks.
American pickers.
American pickers, yeah.
That'd be a good candidate for that, but.
Ms. Douglas? So, I, one of the contingencies is, where did it go? Number two, the building's primary entrances shall be oriented towards Woodward Avenue. Right now, the, it's not. The door is on the south elevate, or south side, not on the west side. Does your agreement with all of those conditions mean you're willing to move your door to the Woodward side?
We physically don't have the ability to do that. One of the prior comments from the engineering division is that any doors facing Woodward, since that wall would be right on the public sidewalk, is we can't have our doors swing out into the sidewalk. We don't have the ability to insert the doors on that wall due to internal fixturing and the way the internal layout of the building is. We originally had the door facing Basset Street in the middle of our building. Based on the staff's feedback during the site plan reviews, it was requested that we move it to as far towards the southwest corner of the building as possible, which we've done. But we physically cannot put it on the Woodward wall because we're right up against the sidewalk, basically.
Okay, fair enough. Ms. Douglas?
Mr. Goddard?
Is that what's contained in the second half of that? Number two is like otherwise deemed okay by planning?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we're, he is correct. They did originally have it in the center of the, would be the southeast facade facing Basset Road. We made them aware of that requirement, that placement of the door is essentially at the discretion of the planning commission. That they should, if they can't get it on Woodward Avenue, to get it as close to that corner as possible. That was one of the items that they did revise from their last plan. And they did move it from the center to, to the end to try to comply with that standard as much as possible.
So, the plan as submitted here complies with number two as far as you're concerned?
When again, it's not a hard and fast standard. It's one of those design standards that as written essentially leaves it up to your discretion.
I was looking for a yes or no. So, they've, they've moved the door as close to.
They have, they have made a good faith effort to comply with it as best they can, I think, yes.
Thank you.
Beeky?
What's behind the alley on the other side of this? Is it, is it houses? I think it's, I think it's houses.
Yes, to the northeast of the alley, it is a single-family dwellings.
And so, I guess I have a question regarding the loading and loading based on what we had heard from another retail shop that had houses right behind it. If the loading and unloading is in the alley, is it during the daytime only? And also that there would not be trucks parked overnight or anything like that with this new regulation in Michigan where semis have to not drive a certain number of hours? Because that's something that could be very sensitive to the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's understood. Autozone would curtail their delivery schedule around the fact that there's residences there. Typically, they, they do it what they call during a non-peak hour. So, if Autozone's busy times are at a certain time during the day, during their open store hours, they would do a delivery around a non-peak time. So, it's definitely going to be during the day, and it's typically one time per week is their delivery, normal delivery schedule.
During the day?
Nothing, during the day, nothing would be parked in the alley overnight, obstructing the alley, anything like that. It'd be an unload and leave.
Good question.
Is this public?
No.
Yeah, there's no public here.
So, I want to ask about the screening. I was a little, I just want to make sure I understand that the proposal here, or the contingency from the, from the department is that if the planning commission so deems it advisable, there would be a masonry wall, not on their property, but on, along the alleyway to the east. That there would have to be some sort of a, a maintenance agreement or something. Can you, Mr. Hedges, can you tell us a little more about that?
That has been something the commission has required for a small handful of developments on Woodward Avenue. The requirement in the ordinance is for a six-foot-high screening of either landscaping, fencing, and/or a masonry wall between commercial development in the commercial zoning district, such as general business, which the site is, and residential zoning, which the property across the alley is one-family residential. So, under the requirements of that, the landscaping second screenings article in the zoning ordinance, they would be required to place that there. Then again, there is a clause within that article that allows all landscaping and screening standards to be set at the discretion of the planning commission. So, in some cases, the commission has not required that six-foot screening along their rear lot line next to the alley. In some cases, they have required it on the opposite side of the alley so it wouldn't block the development off from the alley, and they would be able to use it for loading and also for vehicular access. It, it's been a while since the planning commission has required that, but we do generally list it as an option in any development along Woodward Avenue that is separated from residential zoning by an alley.
Follow-up question, has the homeowner been consulted on that?
We have not. That is one of the things that's generally discussed. To me, it, they met so much at the planning commission, but if that is something that the planning commission would like to look into during the discussion of a license agreement to do that, is typically when the adjacent property owner is contacted to get their feelings about it.
Thank you.
Any other? Ms. Douglas? Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan, eliminating item or contingency number, where is it? Two.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Mr. Goddard, any discussion on this motion? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Approved.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations. All right. Item number four is next. This is a, a site plan also to expand a one-story office building with second level and mezzanine and construct a four-level automated parking structure at 26026 Woodward Avenue, Mr. Hedges.
As described, this is a site plan application to expand an existing office building with a, with a second-level addition plus a mezzanine addition forming a partial third level. It also involves the construction of an automated parking structure within, at the rear of the property. Site plan for this site was reviewed by the planning commission back in 2016 for just adding a second level to the building. It did not involve an automatic parking structure, the mezzanine level at that time. The site plan was approved with contingencies. One of those contingencies was reorienting the off-street parking that was proposed to change it from facing Henry Boulevard, the rear of the property, to have it facing the building. Petitioner did not follow through on that approved site plan with obtaining building permits for constructions, and essentially that approval has lapsed. But what they're now seeking again is, again, addition of a second level and a mezzanine partial level of the office building, and also the automated parking structure. They are again proposing to keep the parking, have the parking spaces face Henry Boulevard instead of the building as the planning commission required previously. We have listed in our staff report that we'd recommend, you know, the, the application be postponed until the petitioner responds to some of our comments within our staff review. Specifically, those were regarding the orientation of those parking spaces, submitting a landscaping plan and changes to strict screening enclosures. However, if the commission doesn't feel it's necessary to delay the, the application, would like to consider for approval. We did list a number of contingencies that we would recommend. The first is there are a number of variances from the zoning board of appeals that would be necessary for the maximum building height, the minimum number of required parking spaces, minimum dimensions for spaces within the automated parking structure, and allowing parked vehicles to maneuver over a public sidewalk. The plan as submitted by the petitioner would require all of those variances from the zoning board of appeals. Item number two lists the items that we were requesting the petitioner respond to as far as a revised site plan for the planning commission review. Those contains all the items that we feel should be added to their plans if commission would like to see it again, or if you're willing to consider approval this evening. The remaining regard the setbacks for the automated parking structure be determined at the discretion of the commission, along with other items regarding that. And the rest of them are just our typical boilerplate contingencies for all site plans, including requirements from the engineering division.
Mr. Hedges, does the petitioner know that you have recommended a postponement?
It was in our staff report that we sent to them. I believe they are aware of that.
Okay, terrific. And are they here?
Yes.
Is there?
Does the commission have any questions for Mr. Hedges? I, I'm inclined to ask for a motion to postpone. I, I don't know that, it's up to the commission, of course, but I'm not so sure we would be prudent to spend a lot of our time and their time when the staff is recommending postponement due to all of these factors that need to be answered. So, Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, I will make a motion to postpone.
Motion by Ms. Douglas to postpone at the recommendation of our staff, is there a support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Kuster.
I would probably give the petitioner an opportunity to address the commission before taking final action, though.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Douglas, are you okay with it?
Yeah.
It's your motion?
Sure.
Okay. Please, your name, sir?
Anthony Reed again. We design mine for 501 Design, we're the architects for the project. And before getting postponed, I wanted to, we have already met with Joe, and I wanted to talk about the benefits of the project. One of the things that we see is that Royal Oak definitely is a great community. It's a thriving community, but it doesn't have an actual entrance or an icon on Woodward. We have all one-story buildings, very simple architecture. We want to create an entrance to this great city on Woodward, and that's what this building is intended to be. For the first time in Michigan, it would be the first time that actually a parking postuler is installed. Just as a, a note, they have just approved the same company to do the automatic parking in the Hudson Tower in Detroit. There's going to be 400 semi-automatic parking spaces in that tower. The same company is going to be doing our parking in this Royal Oak. And one of the things that I joke with Joe was, we're losing a lot of offices to Detroit. This is an opportunity to actually be ahead of that city and actually be the first on that. Another thing that would be a first would be to use Tesla solar panels. So, it's the first time that actually Tesla solar panels would be put on a commercial building in Michigan. So, that would be created, again, our intention is to be unique on the technologies that we're proposing. We're thinking on the future. We all saw the problems about parking. We actually are proposing a parking for the future. This is a parking that is going to be in many cities. It's already in Los Angeles. It's already in Los Angeles, it's already all over New York, and now it's going to be in downtown Detroit. We want it to be in Royal Oak. Just to address the main issue about the parking being towards the residential neighborhood, we wanted to say that if we put it towards the building, we would actually have to have more parking variances than what we have because there would be the less space to put it. We are actually proposing to do a beautiful wall. And if you, if Doc could pull that rendering, then we can look at that backstreet.
Oh, the rear facade?
The rear facade, yeah.
If I can find it quickly here.
It's a rendering, so it's on the...
It just doesn't, it doesn't load very fast. It's a little lower.
Large file.
Normally, it's higher.
Second page?
Yeah, probably, that's probably about right.
You give me a faster computer. Or I'm scrolling too fast?
No.
I mean, to that one on the top right, I would appreciate it.
Is that the one?
Yes. So, this actually shows you how we are actually developing the design. We think that it's a unique architecture. We're using very interesting brick facet designs, and it's things that Royal Oak has not seen before. Truly, we want to become, and Mr. and Mrs. Proney wants to be and have been in the community and want to continue to expand their business, and that's why they wanted us to find a way of actually increasing the density of the building. In 2016, with the current parking area that they could build, they could only build half of the second floor. With this, we are maximizing their investment. It's truly, they're not just keeping it as a simple building. It's not just that. They're truly are making an effort to create an icon for the city of Royal Oak. And the parking, as you can see, the cars would not be seen. The idea is for us to put landscape. That was some of the petition that they asked us to, because we're removing three trees. So, we're actually doing this zigzag wall to actually have landscape there so we can actually plant trees all along the sidewalk to prevent that. So, it's an intention of beautifying the site, and that's why we have them actually facing the street instead of the building.
Ms. Beiki.
So, I have a question, I guess, for Doug. So, the request from the city is to change this parking that's screened with the walls and have it facing a different direction?
No, it's the parking spaces along which would be facing here.
Well, there's parking there that's not seen?
No, it's, well, yeah, that's, they would have surface parking spaces with cars pulling up along the screen you see here. Those were the spaces that we were referring to and were the subject of the commission's contingency in the...
If you go to the site plan, we can discuss about that.
Because personally, I like the wall and all of that. It looks very nice. So, I'm just trying to understand where the cars are relative to... I guess I might have misunderstood the layout.
There you go.
Here we go.
Both the site plan and the petitioner, building owner presented in 2016, and this one, they're proposing to have the off-street parking, these are surface off-street parking spaces, and this is where the automated structure would be. They're proposing to have the spaces pointing towards or facing Henry Boulevard, which is what they proposed three years ago. The site plan approved by the commission then required them to reorient them to have the spaces face the building and not the rear lot line so that they would pull in, cars would pull up to the building instead of along the sidewalk.
If I can address the commission to explain why we went this way?
Without having to go back and wait, these spaces here would be there.
Okay, okay.
And then this, the automated structure, that's what you see there.
Can he, I mean, say something about that?
Sure. So, very quickly.
Well, first of all...
You have to park, you have to speak into a microphone.
Okay, perfect. So, we are, again, if we just put it on that, if you see that first section of the building is in an angle, that's the only space that we need, would have for parking. So, we were, we needed actually to put them on the other side. The circulation of the building, per Joe recommendations in our first meeting and our submission was to actually have the entrance through Woodward angled them so actually you never actually shine the lights to the neighbors because you have that wall that is, it is there. And the circulation, then, you go up into the residential neighborhood. Also, what we needed because of the parking structure, we have idle persons waiting to get into the parking structure so that lane actually becomes an idle space so that the people that are going to be using the automatic parking structure can wait in line to get to that one spot. So, that's why we needed that road to be on this side. That way, we have a longer idle space for the parking structure.
Mr. Goddick, and then Mr. Casada.
What's the height of that wall that would screen the cars from shining their lights onto Henry? Is that a 30-inch masonry?
Three foot six.
Three foot six? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Casada.
I just wanted to address the question to Mr. Hedges. There is a three-foot-six wall. Does that cure the department's concern? Or is it that something higher is needed? Or there are other reasons, other...
Well, as far as the height, it meets the minimum height of what would be required. It's 30 inches, so three and a half feet. Or I think even it may be specified as four feet on the plans would meet the height. Our two concerns were, again, the previous approval. The commission wanted the parking spaces facing the building and not the parking lot. And that the screening at that time, there was no screening required for the last site plan. What would typically be required is a continuous masonry wall of minimum 30-inch height. What they're proposing, as you can see, is it would not be a continuous wall along the sidewalk. There would be a wall along the front of each parking space. So, each parking space would have its individual wall perpendicular to the parking space itself. There wouldn't be a solid, continuous wall along, parallel with the sidewalk. It's something different, but if the, you know, commission's comfortable with it, you do have the discretion to allow alternative means of screening under landscaping standards. But our primary concern was just from the previous approval by the planning commission where you wanted the spaces facing a different angle. We were going out of the presumption that that would still be the desire of the planning commission, sounding like maybe wrong, which happens.
Can I have a comment and a question?
Hold on.
Oh, go ahead, sorry. Oh, he was waiting, sorry.
Are you... Okay, Ms. Beiki.
A comment, interesting to turn the wall and have it on the individual spaces. Again, from a pedestrian access perspective, that's much better because the wall doesn't then block access if you're going to walk through or cut through and not come in a car. So, I kind of like that as an innovation. And was parking away from the building for aesthetic purposes or what was the...
Again, 2016, there was no automatic parking structure.
It's completely different.
It's completely different. So, whatever applies there, it doesn't apply now. We're actually maximizing the parking with the new design and the requirements for the parking structure that we discussed with Joe as an idea. So, the idle, he was worried about the idling people waiting to get into the parking structure. So, that's why we came up with that idea, move them to the outside so we have actually the roadway as an idle space for the people to get into that.
There's actually the plan from 2016 as was approved by the planning commission.
I see. I get...
Mr. Goddick?
So, if this planning commission body was okay with the proposed parking being away from the building and the non-contiguous 30-inch or three and a half-foot wall is submitted, are there any other showstopping issues? You're just looking for a landscaping plan and elevation and a waste receptacle moved?
Yeah, the biggest one's the lack of a landscaping plan with...
Could that be handled administratively? I guess my personal feeling is this is a very unique plan. It seems to have some...
It is, yes.
Very appealing lines to it, and I wouldn't be opposed to having the parking as proposed and the screening for that parking being as proposed. So, I was just looking at anything else that might be of concern to planning that would stop this going forward.
That was it, basically, is the lack of a required landscaping plan with, you know, details of not only the trees and plantings, but also the walls that they are proposing for each of the parking spaces. The rest, yeah, is, is that our biggest item was the orientation of the parking spaces. We guessed wrong on that one. I guess we thought that that was going to still be an issue with the commission as it was three years ago, but it appears it's not.
I probably won't be supporting the motion then because I'd be willing to take action on this tonight.
Mr. Casada.
I can ask the petitioner a couple of questions because I am not familiar with these puzzle parking. And you mentioned that they're in California and at the Hudson's building. I don't know if they're going to be inside. This is open to the weather. Is there some experience that you have with these devices? First of all, are they like a elevator where there's a contractor who does this especially? Are they a product or do you have to design it?
Is there a way that you can go to YouTube and I can actually show you a video of what it is?
I don't have the ability to do that.
I'm sort of asking about your experience.
Yeah. The company that we're using is one of the most respectable companies on automatic parking. I'm going to explain you how it works. It's actually a poser. So, you only access the poser at level. One parking is the only one that accesses, and this actually moves the cars like this and like this. That's why we have four levels, one underground and three above. And it's six spaces, but you only have 21 total because it needs to move like this and like this. We are intended to use this only for the people that actually rent the offices so you can actually have them schedule so it doesn't protrude in the public. And we actually discussed about this. Again, these are installed a lot in New York. They ask us to put, it actually is not open completely. We have our roof on top of it. So, that is the only thing that the company requires. Everything else, they actually make us sign a one-year in advance paid maintenance agreement with them. So, that's part of getting this built. We actually, every month, they come in and they make sure that the parking structure works, and they don't have any issues with winter in New York.
Okay, even if they're open to the air?
Even if they're open to the air.
And even if they're underground partially?
Yes.
So, this is like an elevator contractor who will come in and...
Yes, exactly.
And have the maintenance agreement?
Exactly, it's part of this.
And just to go back, have you done one before?
Not us, but the company that we're buying this, you're buying an equipment. Yeah, they've done many of them, and they are the ones doing 400 in the Hudson Tower in downtown Detroit.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Douglas? Well, they say a motion belongs to the table. I'm willing to withdraw it if the rest of the table agrees.
I agree.
I would agree. Mr. Klooster?
Yeah, I would agree.
So, motion is withdrawn to postpone. Is there another motion?
I would make a motion.
Mr. Goddick?
See if I can get this right, to approve this site plan SP 190206. We're moving to A and to C. And leaving all the other contingencies in place.
Is there support?
Second.
Support by Ms. Douglas. Any discussion on the motion? Not seeing all those in favor. Say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, you're approved.
Thank you.
Excited about the whole building. It looks very beautiful.
Just as a comment, thank you very much. We will submit as one of the conditions is for the expansion of the basement and the buildup of the parking structure first for permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I hope you guys were at the...
I'm disappointed. I thought we would be on Channel 4 doing a good thing.
I thought you guys were, I hope you guys were at the bar until, you know, 10:15.
Oh, I know.
Okay.
We live in the area that, you were right, that is a big project for that spot. Although, that is, I saw this been like that for a long time.
Hopefully, they'll bring something better.
Moving on to other business. This is a sign variance. Request to install three wall signs for a mixed-use building at 424 East Forest Street with a variance to allow four wall signs on north front facade. Mr. Hedges?
Yeah, the petitioner for this building has, already has one wall sign. It's been permitted. It's at the top right-hand corner of the facade elevation you see. They are requesting a variance to place three more wall signs on this facade. Under a sign ordinance, you're allowed one wall sign per building facade. So, they would need a variance to place the additional three wall signs. What they are proposing is two new wall signs for the first level and one for the second at either of the locations shown on the facade elevation at the, whatever their tenant of those building levels would request. So, they wouldn't have, as you see, six signs. There would only be three, two on the lower level, one on the second level, but at any of the locations that you see here, again, at the choice of the building tenant.
Any questions for Mr. Hedges? You're always the last guy, aren't you?
Franklin ideation. Either we're first or last. Yeah, pretty much that. We actually, Cooper Tires is moving in on the second level,
Any questions to the petitioner?
How many signs are we adding?
Three. So, it'll be two of the green ones and one of the pink ones.
So, is Cooper Tires, is that like going to be their corporate office? Or do they have tires on the second floor?
It's going to be a Detroit-area corporate office. They're based out of Ohio somewhere, so, but no sales involved.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, who climbs stairs to look at tires?
Are these backlit or are they just... What do you got here? Are these lighted?
They're going to be internally illuminated, routed push-through. So, it's going to be like a shoebox lid with push-through letters lit up. So, facelit, kind of like the KC that we did. Just built differently.
If this was one sign split into like four parts, would it be size-wise close to what they could do?
Yeah, I forgot to mention in the last part of my staff report, the area of all four signs together would still meet the maximum amount of wall sign area that they're allowed. Again, you're allowed one sign per facade up to a maximum of 100 square feet. The three new signs they're asking for, plus the one existing one, equal 100 square feet. So, they're not going over the maximum size that would be permitted for one sign. They're just breaking them up into four.
I particularly don't have any problem with this. I guess if it proliferated a lot, you know, it might look a little busy, but four signs seem to fit the scale.
Is there a motion, Mr. Goddick?
I move sign variance, whatever it is, 190201.
There's support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any discussion on this motion? Mr. Casada.
I'm just a little bit perplexed why they're pink and green on this building. I wish we had a little better representation. I was out to the building today. I think it looks great, and I'm sort of wondering, I, I, I'm having a hard time thinking it's going to be an enhancement to have pink and green signs on that, that tone of a building.
No, that's just to show the designated sign area, highlighting the square feet. It's not going to be pink and green, so Cooper's going to be blue.
We don't know.
Yeah, we don't know what they're going to be. They haven't even signed leases on the lower level yet.
Cooper's gold and black.
White and blue.
The white and blue.
It's white and blue.
I think you get done, love. This one's white and blue.
Any other discussion? Not seeing all those in favor. Say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Thanks for sticking around.
All right, thank you.
Item two, capital improvements program. Mr. Hedges?
Uh, we, the request of the finance department, we have forwarded you the agenda materials, a copy of the proposed capital improvements program for the city for the upcoming fiscal year. As per state law, the planning commission is required to conduct a public hearing on this. That will be scheduled for the next regular meeting. But the request of finance, we did want to at least get a copy to you beforehand. So if you want to, you can review it prior to the next meeting. But there will be an upcoming public hearing at the next meeting on this item. No actions required this evening.
Thank you. Any questions about this for Mr. Hedges? Okay, now seeing, let's move to item three, the election of officers, the moment two of us have been waiting for. Mr. Goddick?
I'm not sure of the procedure, but I want to propose that the chair remain as chair.
Support.
All right.
That was a motion.
That was a motion.
Any other nominees, discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, so the chair is chosen. Thank you for your confidence in me. Appreciate that.
I'd like to nominate Dan Goddick as vice chair.
Support.
So vice chair, Mr. Goddick, supported by Mr. Klooster. Any other nominees, discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Aye? Congratulations, Mr. Goddick.
It's been a long time, but thank you so much.
All right, the motion to adjourn.
No, madam chair?
Yes. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Douglas.
Madam chair, please. Once you have the floor, you get to do whatever you want.
No, you're, you're right. I did not make a note, and I should have. Please, go, go, go forth.
Yes, given the discussion we've had tonight and the discussions we've had and the gyrations we have to go through to build multifamily and other forms of housing that are consistent with market demands and contemporary practices, and also given the fact that we will not be doing a master plan revision anytime in the near future, I would like to make a motion to ask the staff to, at our next meeting, bring to us a report on their plans for, or their proposals for updating our residential signage, our residential zoning.
Would you consider giving them more focus? Because they might balk at, I'm sorry, but I agree with, and I'm going to support whatever the motion is, but something that they could possibly complete in a, I'm looking at the density level of these, these units that are coming across, and if you just say, give me the whole residential zoning ordinance redone, give me more direction, I guess, with some focus.
Um, well, I think the real interest is multifamily.
Yeah, I was going to ask that, too, because single family is, is what it is.
Is what it is, yeah.
Do you want to sort of winnow it down a little bit?
Yeah, multifamily.
Multifamily.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's not necessarily residential zoning. It's residential use, and it tends to be in mixed-use neighborhood business, those types of zoning districts where we're, we're seeing multifamily developments and having density issues over and over again. But I, I think a next meeting might be tight to ask for a draft proposal on zoning amendments, but maybe by next meeting have a outline of what they think they can address in a timeframe, and then we can discuss it next meeting.
Well, or at the, you know, we just move to have a discussion of it next meeting. Staff doesn't have to come to us with a plan. I mean, you know, it's probably, it may well be something that they want to contract out, but have a discussion about that, but ask staff to be, you know, prepared to give us some ideas.
Make it part of an agenda item so we know we're going to be discussing this.
Yes.
Okay. So that's a motion. Right, Ms. Douglas, is there a?
Got that, Doug.
Is there a support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Goddick. And so we're looking at updating residential zoning.
Multifamily.
Multifamily.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Presidential use, I think Mr. Klooster said, too. Okay, any other discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Great. Okay, now is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
And support?
Support.
All those in favor, say aye? Aye? All right.